Okay, all right, now I think here's, all right, we're gonna move into the regular scheduled agenda items. Called it to order, let's see, consideration of any additions and deletions. Is there any?
Senator, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have one addition under the county attorney, which is a request to approve an engagement letter with the Warner Law Firm to represent the county in a process of C-Girls, forming on his sweat equity LLC versus Walton County, and the Valentine Heights LLC versus Walton County.
Motion to approve the agenda with one addition.
Second. A motion and second, all in favor say aye. Okay, now's the time for any public comment concerning any agenda item. If you have a public comment about those, come forward now, state your name for the clerk. Is there any public comment concerning the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Make the reference of approval of a consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All right. All right, next up is a waste management EAL. Knowledge my conflict of interest, I filled out the proper form and supplied it to the clerk.
Motion to approve the waste management EAL.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Motion carries. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the first of, for your consideration under Admin is a request to, for your approval to close the Coastal Branch Library for maintenance beginning August 13th for a period of four weeks. If you recall, a couple meetings ago, we approved changing the insulation out in that building, this is what this timeframe we use for. We need additional time to be sure that we protect the inventory and the interior of that building as we prepare and install the new insulation. So we will move the bookmobile there to provide the level of service we possibly can during that time, if you so find to approve this motion, and we would recommend your approval.
Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, probably for no reason today unless the board sees fit, but just remind you that we talked last week about the, or last meeting about the new sports park and naming that. We also have the new park at 331 Paygro Road that we will need to consider naming in sometime in the near future. In your package today is the current policy of naming parks and facilities. It deals mainly with naming them after an individual, not so much, and if you want just to, a generic name, for instance, if you decided to call this Paygro Park, we probably need to do some work on that language if that's something you would so desire. But we just wanted to keep this before you as we move forward and ask if there's any direction you would provide staff, perhaps making those adjustments to this policy so those things could be considered as well.
And if we get nominations, just give it to staff, I assume. I know I have one, it's a granddaughter of a Mr. Brown, I can't remember his first name.
Yes ma'am.
So I'll pass those on as well.
You mean other directions?
No, sir. I mean unless you want us to look at making some amendments to that policy to bring back your consideration.
I hear Bay Grove Park, Bay Grove Park lot too, so.
Okay, we'll look at that.
I think we may in that direction too, Commissioners.
Okay.
That's what we've known, I mean, you know, that's Bay Grove, as long as I can remember.
Okay.
All right, we'll work on that field, please.
I think we used to call it the Grand Nether Viera.
It's also been called Cracker Beach, didn't you?
Yes, we call it Cracker Beach, maybe we can approve on that.
Thank you. Next item is a request approval to begin negotiations with New Line Skate Parks, which was the highest ranked firm of those submitting to RFQ 018-26 for the design of the skate park at Helen McCall Park. It's been an ongoing task that we're tempted to point to negotiate with the design firm, so we're just seeking your permission to move forward with those negotiations with New Line Skate Park, who was the highest ranked firm. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Cory Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. I would like to see this company look into non-concrete skate equipment. I would also like to request that none of it be underground, meaning no digging a pool and pouring concrete in it like they do out in California. So I just don't, I haven't researched this company or what kind of skate facilities they have designed in the past, but I would like to see it all above ground, because it's damaging to dig into the earth, and then I would like to see them try and use an alternative material than concrete, because concrete is so heavy. Helen McCall Park brought in millions of pounds of fill dirt in order to raise that land, so there's already too much weight in that neighborhood, so I'd like to see an alternative to concrete. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none. We got a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, next item is a request to accept the resignation of Matt Oresko from the local Restore Act to be as the environmental participant in position and appoint Jeff Talbert to fill the vacant. This is a request from Linda Gates and Admin that we make those changes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, next item is a request your approval for staff to purchase off the NJPA state contract, allowing the county to purchase the Navoline Financial Suite replacement in this, as necessary due to the service of Navoline. If you recall, over the last couple of years, we've known that Navoline was coming to an end and its uses and purposes would expire in the near future, we've come to that time, and we have determined that the best replacement for that system can be purchased off a state contract, and the next, if you approve this, the next item will be for you to approve that contract, but we didn't want to move forward with purchasing off the state contract without your permission, so that's the request under this item, is that you allow us to use the NJPA state contract to purchase that replacement system.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item is adjacent and akin to the previous item, which is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the software service agreement with Tyler Technologies for their Munis software package. That has been looked at very diligently through our IT staff, that of the clerk's office as well, and all those involved, and has determined this is the most financially feasible and user-friendly product available. The funds have been appropriated over the last couple of years in the budget to make this purchase, and we would request that we move forward.
Sports wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, moving to public works items. The first is request to award RFQ 18-019 for CEI services for County Road 183B scrap project, and approve to begin negotiations with the top-ranked firm Genesis for those CEI services.
Sports wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item is request to award RFQ 018-020 for engineering services for County Road 183B. Again, it is a scrap project and approved to begin negotiations with a top-ranked firm of DRNP.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, next item is a request to award RFQ 018-023 for CEI services for County Road 883, which is a 60 grant project, and approved to begin negotiations with a top-ranked firm of EXP US Services Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, next item is a request to award RFQ 018-027 for the PDNE study of the South Walton Connector roads and approve to begin negotiations with Atkins. If you recall, you directed staff to issue a RFQ for this project seven months back with specific directions to include all options in that area. Atkins Engineering was a top-ranked firm, as the most qualified, and this would allow us to begin negotiations to bring back the contract for those services.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Come forward and state your name for the clerk.
Celeste Cabina, and I'm here to say that you're wasting your time and money if you're going to look at a road that goes through Point Washington State Forest and Deer Lake State Park. I've turned in plenty of information to you, maps and studies, that looks at the environmental as well as legal impacts of a road that's going to go through any of the conservation recreation lands. And, you know, I'll just briefly say, you know, there's alternatives, you need to go around on the edges of the state parks and the state forest, that's the only way you're gonna actually get a road. There's no way you're gonna get a road through these conservation lands. And I know y'all keep looking at the power line road, but, I mean, it's, I can pull up the maps that are on the county's website, and I can tell you, that goes through 10, you know, 12, 13 acres directly of wetlands, and then indirectly you would be impacting, I don't know how many acres of wetlands. Those are the drainage basins for Peach Creek, Eastern Lake, and Camp Creek Lake. It's just not gonna happen, and I think you need to really focus on the alternatives. And this isn't gonna solve any traffic problem, it's gonna create a larger traffic problem there at Eastern Lake, that whole area, because if you look at the map, this is gonna be a direct route for the 70,000-plus homes that St. Joe's putting in north of 98 in both Walton and Bay County. So I think you need to really focus on leaving the state parks and forests alone and looking at those other alternatives.
Celeste, I just wanna comment that the study is for that purpose of looking for other roads, I don't have any predetermined idea of where the road should go, that's why I would like for this group to come in and give us every possible alternative and suggestion, so, thank you.
Right, well, I just felt like I wanted to comment because historically, you know, back prior to even 2003, this, a road has been looked at there through the forest, through the park, and so I just wanna say that it's not gonna happen, and if y'all continue to consider impacting the forest and the park, you're wasting your time and your money.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnie.
Celeste, the other thing I think I'm approving it to move forward is to find out, can we get federal permits and state permits? Can we not get them? Let's find out, because no one has been able to answer that question for me. Do we have the permits to do this, do we not? Where do we stand with the state? Where do we stand federally with this property? And I think that's one of the things, instead of kicking the can down the road and coming up with more ideas and more studies, this, I think, will finally, will come to some conclusion.
Yeah, well, there's no federal property there, it's all state conservation land.
Well, DEP, I'm talking, lots of permits, a lot of people are gonna be touching that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you. And Ms. Cabina, I know, I know you would agree, we do have a traffic problem on 38. Now, the intersection, thanks to Commissioner Anderson's leadership and the commission as a whole, has really done great things at that intersection, I was down there this weekend. As we, as we grow, we need to look ahead to see what else we can do for future, so this study will actually give us every possible alternative, and I, you know, anxiously await this.
But, Gina, the county has created the traffic problem, and I think you need to look at other things to reduce traffic other than impacting the conservation land. So, you know, you need to stop creating the problem that you want the forest and parks to solve.
Thank you. Ms. Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie McQuiston, M-C-Q-U-I-S-T-O-N. I see roads plural, you're looking at more than one connector, several connector roads? Possibility of several?
Several possibilities.
Possibilities, okay.
And one of the possibilities may be, don't do anything.
Good, that's in there, that's one of the options, okay. And I don't think there's any, well, there is no experience, we have no experience right now with a hurricane or evacuation since we've gotten the new bridge, we've gotten 331 four-lane, we've gotten, I don't even think 98 was four-lane the last time we had a hurricane. The new intersection is working beautifully, it, you know, there's no, the traffic flow is so good there, and so I don't know how, I hope these Atkins people will take all of that into consideration when you're talking about, my understanding is the purpose of these connector roads is for, what, evacuation or what? Is it for the convenience of, what, what's the purpose we're looking for?
That's one of the purposes, traffic and safety and hurricane evacuation. But like I said, we're, there will be tasks to look at all options, and one of the options is everything's fine.
Well, okay, well, it certainly is working right now with all the people here, and we hope that they will look at, and I've tried to look, drag down that area and see actually who the roads will benefit, because I don't know how many of those places are rentals now between, what, the hub and Seagrove, I don't know. Do they rent in water sand? I don't know. Are there people, how many people live in here? How many people actually live there? Okay, and then last of all, excuse me, pardon me, do they associate costs with whatever they, whatever they come up with, if there are connector roads or a, they'll come up with costs and all of those things? Okay, well, again, I have to say, I have to echo Celeste, and you all know this, I've said it for years and years, I think we need to protect our preservation land, that wasn't meant to, well, when you have enough, enough of four people, we'll just put some roads in here, add what we set a precedent, and it will not be the only one. If it's ever allowed one time, we all know, that'll just be the first. Thank you.
Bonnie, I want to just say thank you for bringing up the evacuation issue. We were the second slowest evacuation to the Keys, since we have the four lanes, since we have the intersection, I don't know, has anyone heard any other statistics about, I'd like to know if staff, if kind of.
Last I checked, it was, we're still the second slowest evacuation in the state.
They have no historical experience for that, there's, all of these new changes have taken place since we've had a hurricane.
So the dilemma to that is just get out early.
Could I make a comment? I understand that a lot of people in the air and whatever have made up their minds. Unfortunately, the five people sitting up here, we cannot make up our mind. We have to evaluate, say, evacuation, safety, traffic, everything else that affects the people that live in South Walton. So this study is gonna give us the information we need to make an informed decision, not a decision on a motion or that sort of thing. You know, we're tasked with, with doing what's right, and the only way we can do that is have an outside entity look at the whole situation and bring us back some actual facts.
Is this building on the Atkins study that we've already done?
I'm sorry?
Is this building on the Atkins study that we've already done? Would Chance had, Chance says it is, okay. Study after study after study, we need to come up with a solution.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chance.
I think this study's mandatory, Doug, to get where we're going.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is this a mandatory study if we're going to move in any?
Well, you can make a lot of decisions without a study, but it's certainly in the best interest, in my opinion, of the county and this decision-making process to know what the options are, eventually put a cost to those options, and then determine the feasibility of them, that's what we're doing.
And, and we'll know if we're able to get permits and whatever it takes to move forward to, so that we're not dragging it on again.
Yes ma'am.
This has been, I've been on the board 12 years now, and I think we've kicked this can down the road for over 12 years, so it's time to.
And I don't look at it as kicking the can down the road, I look at it as we're getting informed decisions. We're not hastily making decisions that would have a negative effect, so I want, in, coming from an education background, I wanna get as much research and much information so that I can make an informed decision.
I meant in the years past, not this.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chance.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Bob.
I'd like to applaud the Commissioners for considering this and encourage them to vote yes for the study. We've complained about the infrastructure in the South for years and years, here's a real attempt to look at a solution to one of the infrastructure problems, and I applaud you for doing that and urge you to vote yes on this item, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bowman, and then after her, please.
Cory Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Okay, first I would like to say that it's extremely irresponsible of you to think about building new, building new roads, when our current connector roads, 393, 283, and 83 are actually falling apart, and not to mention that all of the bridges, not just in our town but in our country, are falling apart, so what are you doing thinking about building new roads when the roads that we have are falling apart? Secondly, the first woman was correct when she said that you're wasting your time doing this study, because the reason this has not gotten anywhere in 12 years is because you can't do it. There is no alternative, that is why you are not supposed to overbuild this area, is because we can only have the three connector roads that we currently have. St. Joe didn't have a right to cut in Camp Creek. But anyways, St. Joe's not gonna be building another 70,000 homes anywhere around here, because they're not going to, they don't own the land. If St. Joe legally had the right to build homes over here, then they would not have needed to have claimed bankruptcy in the 70s. They claimed bankruptcies because the storm of '72 knocked down a huge crop of paper trees. So now, if they had had the legal right to build million-dollar beach homes down here, they would have had no reason to have gone bankrupt, so that's proof positive that St. Joe doesn't have the right to build homes here. Therefore, there won't be any more buildings, so we don't need any more roads, because here's a fact, half of the traffic that's on 38 are construction workers and trucks. So since there's nothing left to build, there won't be any more, there won't be any more construction worker traffic, and there won't be any more, there won't be any more trucks bringing in, there won't be any more, there won't be any more trucks, trucks bringing in fill dirt, so that's like 50% of the tra, of the traffic that's on 38 is just about construction that you're not supposed to be doing. Also, the two proposed places that are over there in the forest you can't touch are actually parcel lines, parcel lines, parcel, parcel lines, what's going on with the mic? If you look at the way this town is built, it's actually all parcel lines, because it goes back to this timber lease where they would just cut the land in like a grid, so like Chad Holly, 283, 293, these are all parcel lines, like bigger block sections, and that's where St. Joe and you are proposing to cut through the forest and take all those trees for free, because for some reason, the road considers trees garbage, so they're profiting. Like, that's why you wanna build new roads, because you get all those trees for free and you don't pay the timber taxes on them, instead of taking that taxpayer money and actually using it to repair the roads that we currently have that are falling apart. Thank you.
Please.
Just three things that I'd like to say. One is, you know, any possibility of the road through the forest with the power line, you know, you need to remember too that Alabama Power actually has rights to that, and it's questionable whether they, you know, cooperate or collaborate. I thought we'd kind of looked at all these options before with this, even with the same company, and I believe that one of the biggest concerns was affecting existing neighborhoods, so I don't, I'm not sure what we're doing, or what we're looking at different now, or possibly different that wouldn't have that same problem. And then, last but not least, and this is really important, I hope they give every bit as much weight to how many people would come in on any possible road as opposed to just getting out. Egress sounds great when you're talking about a hurricane, and it is, but I really wonder if this were a one-way road only, and the only way was out, will we be doing it? Thank you.
Yes ma'am, Mr. Flack.
Bill Flack, L-F-T-C-H-Y, I just wanted to follow up on what she just said, would it not be prudent to at least discuss this road with Alabama Power and the state to see what their opinions are as far as proceeding with it?
Bill, as far as I know, Chance, whenever they start dealing with Atkins, I think in this case, they're gonna be talking and reaching out to all the landowners, whether it's Alabama or Florida or whatever, to see, so they're gonna be in the mix as far as the conversation.
Well, I understand that, but could we not, could not Chance talk to these two entities that are most important before we spend the money on a study?
Bill, we don't even know if this is gonna, if that's gonna be the road, this is what the study's gonna show us, the different, different things, and one of the possibilities may be no road at all, we don't need it.
I understand that.
But if we do need it, you have to have this study. The only way you can, you can get, move forward is to have a study like this, and Chance, if you'll come in and explain that to him?
Talk slowly with Chance.
One aspect of the study is to define an alignment. If, if, if the, if the road is deemed feasible or needed, then you define an alignment, and then after, after the alignment is defined, then you go through what it would take for property acquisition. That's really to say, hey, we're gonna go ahead and talk to these people about getting a road through here, we would know already that's where the road needs to be. It's, it's the standard process that DOT does, that's, that's why we wanted to go this route, to check all the boxes that DOT would go through to put in the same type of facility.
Well, Chance is here, have you identified another road that you think has good potential?
There's been, there's been a lot identified in the previous work that Atkins has done, all, all over that whole corridor, I mean, 395 and Warrisham Parkway. You know, the outcome of this study might be the four-lane 395, who knows?
Thank you.
To meet the same, meet the same need.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, what's the board's wish?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, next item, or back up one, because I missed it, is request award RFQ 018-SEGROW24, engineering services for County Road 883, which is again a 60 grant project, and approved to begin negotiations with a top-ranked firm, which was Genesis Group.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item, number 27, is request. Next item, number 27, is a request to award approved to authorize the chair to sign contract 018 dash zero three one for the derelict vessel relatable to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, which was Honda Enterprises, in the amount of $73,080.
Motion to approve, thank goodness.
Second, and a big shout-out to little Melinda Gates, who's worked her fanny off for this project, and it's finally coming together.
Absolutely, she has.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is a request to approve an advertise to hold a budget workshop on July 10, 2018, at 10 o'clock at the Walton County Courthouse in the Tiniak Springs, as well as approving the following dates for the budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing would be September the 10th, 2018, 5:01 here at the South Walton Annex, and the final budget hearing September 24, 2018, at 5:01 at the Tiniak Springs Courthouse. So your approval would be for these three dates.
Some move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. TDC, Mr. Jay.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Move this a little bit, it's kind of blocking my monitor here. Well, we have quite a few items on the agenda today. The first four are related to the advisory committees for the TDC. Sometime back, we had some discussion about reducing the number required for a quorum, which the board did, thank you very much for that. So I brought that back to the council and we added two more people. So today, I'm going to ask for approval of the final list of the nine members for each committee. So to start it off, request to approve the 2018 TDC Marketing and Communications Advisory Committee. This committee is made up of Jen Richard, Kelly Parker, Jessica Blackin, Ron Cruget, Lisa Jones, Nancy Stanley, Sarah Braswell, Stacy Brady, and Larry Green.
More wishes?
Motion, second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is request to approve the 2018 TDC Events Activities Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, and the committee members for that committee are Ted Horace, Ashton Banks, Marissa Gura, Chelsea Calhoun, Dan Vargo, Amy Kobel, Jan Saffron, Kathleen Bradwick, Sammy Sanchez.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Corey Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. I was looking at the list of events and activities, and what I did not see there was the Monarch Butterfly Festival.
Ms. Bowman, we're talking about the committee members, not what their calendar is all about. It's just approval of the nine committee members is what's up for discussion now.
Okay, so what you're saying is I'm not allowed to talk about the fact that the Monarch Butterfly Festival doesn't exist anymore?
You talk to me and us whenever it comes up for the board. Right now, I would just...
I'll talk to you after the meeting if you'd like.
No, that's okay. I know why it doesn't exist anymore because you killed the Monarch Butterfly's environment. Thank you.
Ms. Bowman, also, you could speak during public comments at the end about this. Not now, but at the end, you can come out and speak about both of those.
Okay, what's more wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item, request to approve the 2018 TDC Beach Management Advisory Committee, and that committee is made up of Ron Christensen, Matt McGee, John Henderson, Matt Allen, David Vaughan, Danny Magliano, Philip Poundstone, Debbie Hurd, and Lisa Baushy.
More wishes?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? I can't say no.
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I'd like to thank the commissioners for reconsidering their earlier motion and postponing this and adding a representative of the local communities to the, to the membership of this committee. Thank you.
I agree, thank you, Jay.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is request to approve the 2018 TDC Destination Improvements Advisory Committee, and that committee is made up of Gary Braumeyer, Kelly Anderson, Kate Johnson, Patrick Hartsfield, Rick Talbert, Marily Morris, Lee Moore, John Robben, and John Toomes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. The next item, request to approve RFP 018 dash 018 for website design and maintenance for the TDC to the top-line firm, Zender Communications, in the amount of $288,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Commissioner Nipper, you look like you ready to go out of your chair.
Jay, is this amount to redesign again this year? This is $24,000 a month?
This is a runtime payment, so this is a payment that we will pay Zender, and then part of it, which is included in there, is the maintenance fee. So it's the bid out of the side of why it's so high.
Didn't we build it out last year?
No, we haven't talked about this for some time, so we asked for permission to put out an RFP. So this is just finalizing what we asked for, you know, for the process.
But, but Zender, you can use, just because the name is unique?
Yes.
I noticed that we've...
They are a credit advertising agency, correct? So they're the one on the bid to do the website. Does that make sense?
Okay. Some more wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item, request approval to utilize remaining BP funds in the amount of $1,902,660,000 for loan purchase, and/or design, engineering, and advertise to hold a public hearing on July 10, 2018, to bring forward funds. So what we're asking with this agenda item is to utilize the remaining BP funds that the TDC has to use it for the property purchases on 331. We actually closed on that two weeks ago, and so we'd like to utilize these funds for that, and that would leave a balance of $197,660,000, and we'd like to use those funds for design and engineering.
Motion, second. Okay, motion, second. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Corey Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Yeah, the money here from BP, the BP oil spill affected all of the residents and damaged everybody's environment, so I don't see why this money shouldn't be distributed to the people, the people, the people, the people who were affected by the oil spill. I don't see why the county thinks that this can all of a sudden become private money that it can buy a building with to put your tourist developments in. So I'm just saying this sounds a little illogical to me. I see this BP money that keeps coming from British Petroleum as a way to fund the Confederacy and end up with stealing public land, stealing public lands with money that really belongs to the public because we are the ones that were affected by this, not you. So anyways, I think this money should be distributed to the people, and you can buy your own building. Thank you.
Mr. Tucson?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you correct me if I'm wrong, this money was specifically allocated to the TDC. It is not, it's never been in the general fund.
Correct.
So, and being allocated to the TDC, you have certain parameters that you have to abide by in spending TDC money?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yes, ma'am.
And this money was part of a settlement to compensate the TDC for lost revenue as a result of that?
Right, the TDC, not down, but the TDC.
The visitor's son is very appropriate for this one.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item, number 35, request approval to advertise an RFQ for continuing coastal environmental management services. So this item, I'll just kind of explain this to you. We are looking to do a, and we've talked about this, I guess, for about a year or so, they're obtaining a permit, so in the event that we have a hurricane and our beaches need reimbursement based on a hurricane, or the energetic causes, they'll have a permit sitting on the shelf to do that. So that's all this is. Now, based on that, legal house reviewed our current contract, and they feel that those services are outside the scope of what we currently have. So a lot of them is regaining the contract, and so we have to do an RFQ in order to do that. And in doing so, we'd like to combine what the TDC does, allowing what the county does. Melinda has a contract separate with Taylor Engineering to allow her to permit seawall construction along the coastline, so we'd like to just combine that into one contract.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Corey Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Question, did he just say seawall, like...
So, Ms. Bowman, there were several beachfront property owners who put up seawalls after the 2004 and 2005 storms. Were required to do monitoring of those seawalls because they were not permitted by those property owners, but required by the state to do that. So this would cover the, I guess, permitting process and the review and monitoring of those seawalls.
Okay, so those people weren't supposed to build them in the first place?
Correct.
And now what, we're having to spend public money to maintain and look at, watch them and make sure they're okay?
Yeah, we're required by the state to do that, yeah.
Okay, so why didn't the state just require that the people take these seawalls down?
That's a good question for the state.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Yeah, we have a motion, a second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and the next item, final item for the TDC, number 36. So with the RFQ that we're doing for the coastal environmental management services, our contract is up with Taylor Engineering, and so we do have an option to renew. So we're going to renew that until we get the new RFQ done, and then, once we get everything in place, then we're going to cancel this contract. So this is request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign and exercise a first option to renew contract 015 dash 023 with Taylor Engineering for coastal management consulting services until a contract for continuing coastal environmental services has been awarded.
Some move.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is it for the TDC today. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Okay, you're, you're still continuing to look for acquisitions of land, and I guess you're still getting people?
I'm getting people, and I might be having something before the board, maybe in the next month. I'm just waiting for some paperwork on some individuals, make sure their information is out there before I bring it to you. So I'll probably have something, like I said, shortly.
Off the top of your head, do you know about how much we've spent in the last six months, a year on acquisition, and is it about five parcels?
Uh, the last...
Under a thousand?
Yeah, I know, since I've been here the past two years, we've spent $27,000 purchasing property. The past year, we purchased Driftwood, which was 1.9, and I think that's really the most recent thing, probably within the last six months.
And that's out of visitor money, so thank you.
Okay, next up, is it a public hearing?
Yes, sir. Could we have a...
Public hearing.
Thank you.
Motion, second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Commissioners, just real briefly, I'm going to give a little bit of history because I know this is an item that we've talked about quite a bit. So this is the third public hearing that we're having on the Amendments to the Beach Activities Ordinance. Just a few things that I would like to clarify before we get going. We've had a lot of discussion about no trespass signs, but I want to make it clear to the board members and to members of the public that these proposed sign regulations are content neutral, so it doesn't matter if this, we're talking about a no trespass sign, if we're talking about a sign of any other nature, the regulations would apply across the board, so I do want to make that clear. And then the goal with these Amendments to the Beach Activities Ordinance is to come up with reasonable regulations on these signs. I know that some commissioners have heard from members of the public that they would like to see no signs on the sandy portion of the beach. Now, I certainly, certainly understand that sentiment. We're, we have a federal court ruling that says that we cannot bar the signs completely. So the goal of this was to come up with some reasonable regulations on that signage. Again, this is the third public hearing that we have had on this matter. We've had one in May, and then earlier this month as well. I believe that the only two issues left to be resolved are, just based on the board's discussion, there's been a lot of talk about whether or not a sign should come in at night. The idea with requiring the signs to come in at night was to make sure that it was consistent with all the other regulations we have on Leave No Trace. So that's been a big focus of the board's discussion. The last public hearing was continued. The board asked that we talk with the sheriff's office to see if they have GPS capability to determine where property lines are located. I believe that representatives from the sheriff's office are here to discuss that matter, but from my discussions with the sheriff, and I believe some of you might have had individual discussions with him, the sheriff does not have the capability to determine exactly where property lines are located based on GPS. So that's one outstanding issue, and then I don't want us to forget, before we finish the public hearing today, we also, we're going to address some concerns of the South Walton Fire District. Those matters are on page 11 of 25, so we do have a request from the South Walton Fire District to see if the board would be willing to include them in the decision on closing the beach. So if you'd like, I guess it might make sense to take those items up individually.
That's fine, we'll do them individually. I'd like to start this thing out with the sheriff, see who's going to speak for him? Major or sheriff here?
Major Preston.
Major Preston, you doing it?
The sheriff here.
Yes. All right, Sheriff Atkinson.
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
So I have a new affinity for the Book of Daniel today.
What'd you say, huh?
I said I have a new affinity for the Book of Daniel today. Chloe, somebody went to Sunday School and went to the lion's den. Good morning.
Sheriff, just so you know, I think what we're looking at is that we've had some discussion about how it's going to be enforceable for the sheriff to take some action, and what mechanisms, if any, that you may have that can help define property lines that will make your job easier as far as enforcing.
Right, so there's really a couple of things here that are at play. We have obviously property law, criminal law, and we've got some constitutional issues all involved in this at the same time, one of which actually supersedes the other in some regards. So from a standpoint of criminal, there's criminal trespass and there's the civil trespass, and they are slightly different. From a standpoint of the sheriff's office, obviously, we're not in the position of telling everybody where their property lines are at. We expect owners to know that. Our policy is that they possess a certified DEP survey that says, you know, this is our property lines, this is where it's at, and that they'd be able to tell us where the lines are at. That's the way we're going to try and adopt it. The question of GPS came up, I know we had that, we've had that discussion before, and I think maybe I should probably provide some context. What we meant was that we are not going to try and quibble over a foot, one way or the other, to the east or the west, right? So if somebody comes up and says, hey, I want you to move one, one foot, that, you know, that's, that's not reasonable. We're not going to try and get into delineating that. If it's, what we would say clearly, inside what the survey possesses that shows that it's on private property, that becomes an issue where we can say, okay, there is a GPS, you know, give or take a minus of three feet, that this is reasonable, that this is, or probable, excuse me, wrong terminology here, I know the attorneys were probably twitching when I said that, but probable that the trespassing has occurred from that standpoint. So all that's allowed is saying, yes, it is the responsibility of the property owner to know where their property lines are at. And remember, in the state of Florida, anything, there's not a specific trespassing on the beach, right? There's trespassing, that's Florida statute 18, and I think 5A is the control, 18, 5A is the controlling on that, and it essentially says anything five acres or less within residence is presumed to be trespassing and is not required, not required by Florida at all to be signed. If you put signs up under the trespassing statute, there are very specific ways that has to be done. However, that is not a requirement under Florida at all. But for us, we, we have to know where the property lines are at. Is that more confusion than is assistance?
I understand where you're going with that.
I understand what you do, yes, right.
My conversations concerning this over the last couple of times we talked is, we know it's going to be difficult to address those types of actions down there. And my position has been that the, there should be a marker at the wet line, if you will, that will give your people the ability to further understand where these property lines, if somebody wishes to pursue it. And that's just one thing I...
We can't hear you back here.
We're trying, we're having mic issues, we're doing the best we can.
But, you hear it now, okay. But that's my, my look at it, is because I wanna make sure that, we're trying to make it as simple as possible, even though it is going to be. But I wanted, with those types of signage, monopole down at the edge of the water, with, that can be backed up with a survey, be something that you would like to see for your personnel?
I'm gonna refrain from saying what my opinion is in regard to whether or not a sign is appropriate. What I would say is it absolutely for us to make a criminal arrest for trespassing, we have to know where the property lines are at. Now, the benefit of the doubt, I guess you would say from a standpoint of that, if they're possessing that survey, is when the owner tells us that, we're gonna have, they're gonna have to be sure that what they're saying is accurate. Now, how they determine they're accurate, that's, that really the honest is on them from that standpoint.
Okay.
And just, Commissioner, can I just elaborate for a second? Because we're actually running into some very, you know, we have this situation where even things that we thought were somewhat clear in regard to, say, what the mean high tide water line, the term wet sand, it is, it can be a complex issue, as you are well aware, particularly when it's different west of topsail as opposed to east of topsail, right? But we've filled it, and as you all have, I'm sure, many, many emails and phone calls concerning this issue. A great example was, you know, we would have people go in, well, what's the difference between surf and tide? What's the difference between wind blown and, I mean, some of these people are unreasonable in the regards of how to, how to make a decision on this stuff. What we've tried to say at the water line is this, what we know under Florida law that is reasonable for us to attempt to do is in what is essentially the wet sand or the tidal line. We know that, we feel confident from that standpoint. That's my rule, I'm gonna stand by that because I think that's fair. In the east and west, and I know that's primarily, you know, where our, where our issue comes in, you know, that's gonna fall on the owner, they need to know where it's at.
Okay. So I hope I don't put you on the spot, but I think you had been, or somebody in your staff, had been talking with the SAO, State Attorney's Office, as to how they were going to interpret what's going on there.
Right. So, yeah, obviously, we work very closely with the State Attorney's Office, trying to ascertain what would be their position from a standpoint of prosecution, whether or not, you know, ultimately, as you well know, but for the benefit of the rest of the board, to make a decision whether or not an arrest is made, really boils down on, to a couple of issues, not the least of which, whether or not we know that case can or cannot go forward. So for instance, if the state's attorney says, we believe this matter is in dispute and it's in litigation and we think there's some issues, that would negate my ability to make criminal arrest, in my opinion, because then it would become an issue of, you wouldn't make an arrest where you know there's not gonna be a successful prosecution, doesn't make sense. We're waiting, they're still finishing that review, I realize it is, it is the last week, we are in, we are in concert, you know, in constant communication. I don't hundred percent know the answer to that, but I anticipate knowing by the end of this week. And we will push that information out as quickly as possible. But it, but as you will, of course, as you're aware, regardless of what happens, and from that regard, nothing about this changes the individual property owner's right to enforce civil trespass. It does, however, change the liability mechanism from that standpoint.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have some. Let's re, retell me the position, the law. The law says that you don't have to have a sign.
Correct. Five acres or, Florida statute eighteen, five A, I forget the subsection in there, but it essentially says this, if there's a residence on the property and it is five acres or less, that is not a necessity. You know, being very pragmatic, what Commissioner Chapman is referring to, is extremely difficult for a deputy sheriff to walk down the beach and make an, ascertain whether or not this is somebody's private property based on these property lines. I mean, we're gonna do our best to mediate this and to, you know, provide customer service and be reasonable, but I know you will find this shocking, but there's unreasonable people. And there are people that you cannot communicate with at some level. And so, you know, we're gonna do our best, but it is, it does, it's very difficult without knowing where those property lines are at.
Right. And then my next question is, if we voted to do a sign at the toe of the dunes, would that be, and the reason I have real issues with signs past the toe of the dunes is because of safety, our creatures, mainly, you know, if you have a bunch of signs that go all the way to the water's edge, the first responders couldn't even get through, they're permanent signs. So, you know, can you, I guess, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but could you do, could your enforcement officers do this job if we allowed a sign at the toe of the dune, a permanent sign at the toe of the dune? I mean, can you kinda look and go straight up from that? I know nothing's gonna be exact without a survey, but, but I'm trying to find something that's fair to the, of the landowners, fair to our community, but yet is cognizant of safety and of the environment and all those things, and even aesthetics. I mean, the most horrendous thing for me to even think of is looking down that beach and seeing sign after sign after sign. I'm like, I'm, you know, a judge would have to tell me I have to do that.
Right, I understand. And I don't want to, I don't wanna dance on the issue, I'm just trying to say very pointedly, we're ultimately going to defer to what that survey says to the best of our ability to ascertain it. So if you're asking me what makes it easier to see, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do to make it easier to see. Whether or not that's palatable to this board and whether that's palatable to the public is two separate issues. I unfortunately do not have the leeway to make a decision, let me correct myself on that, I am not going to willfully choose not to enforce the law, right? I just am not gonna do that. It's a moral, from my standpoint, it's a moral imperative. No, and I don't, I wanna be clear, I know that you're not asking me, but what I'm going to try and do the best of my ability and with my, our deputy's ability, is to try and determine where these properties or lines are at. And I see a lot of conversation standing on the beach, I think we will use a myriad of things, I think GPS is one option to try and assist with it. But I don't wanna mislead you, if we get down to a space of this far, you know, we're not gonna move people, we're not gonna arrest people over three and four feet, that's just, it's not practical and I quite frankly, I don't think it's the right thing to do. So we'll do our best to try and mediate this, you know, if you put, if you put signs out there, let's use that for example, you know, whether or not you leave the signs or whether they stay, stay every night, I mean, that, that's a whole separate set of issues, right? Here's what we say, they have to be right. If you put them out there and you're moving them every day, that's not my responsibility to determine, you know, to tell you how to put your stakes up. You've got to do that. So, I mean, again, nothing about this relieves the property owner's responsibility to determine where their line's at.
So that is nothing...
Nothing about any decision you make from, notwithstanding what type of signs you use, relieves the property owner of their responsibility and their right to say where their property line is at.
And that's the issue I have, is they do have a right?
Yeah, they have a right to mark the property.
Statutorily, there is specific size and what needs to be on that sign?
Yeah, well, yes and no, because it's not, if you put a sign up, there are specific statutory language about what it should look like. I mean, the statute's very clear about that, so many feet off the ground, certain size block, if you use it. But just to be, so I'm, I wanna bifurcate this for a second, they are not required by Florida law for five acres or less. Counselor, am I saying that correctly?
Yes, sir.
I think that's right. Now, you know, if you put the signs up, do you want them to be in compliance with the rest of the trespassing statute? That's a decision you have to make, but you're not required to have the signs by law. Now, whether or not you choose to mark the, you know, four corners and those kind of things, that really is up to you as a board to make that decision. Obviously, from our, from a sheriff's office standpoint, if you, if this wasn't the beach, right, if that wasn't the discussion, which it is, and I understand that, you know, we would tell you, anything that makes something clear, obviously, the better it is, right? However, notwithstanding, there are other issues here for you to consider. What we're saying to you is, we're going to work with you and the public, both the beachgoers and the individual property owners, to try and use as much reasonable judgment, as much customer service as possible to diffuse these situations. We have about thirty-three, I think there are thirty-three beach accesses that roughly are going to allow people to stand in the surf line, some version of that, as it's currently written. That's gonna cause some confusion, so obviously, we're, we understand that and we're gonna do what we can to resolve it.
If the townhome, if the owners come together and say they, they would like to have one sign at one edge and one sign at the other, and then in the statute, I think it says five hundred, I'll just say feet apart?
Yeah.
I don't wanna say yards, I think it is feet.
It's feet.
It's feet. Would that suffice in your mind if they chose to put up those signs and then five hundred feet, so that we don't have an overwhelming amount of signs for each person's private property and it's understood that that entire area is considered where they're marking their private property?
Yeah, I mean, would that suffice? It would, but just from a purely legal sufficiency standpoint, they do not have to have the sign to, for their private property, right? So they don't have to have it.
They don't have to.
Pardon?
Right, they don't have to.
They don't have to, right, exactly correct. So, you know, if you, so I guess that decision really, the five hundred feet and those types of things, you don't have to put one every five hundred feet, certainly, because they're not required to have it at all. That's just really a decision, I think, from a, probably a code standpoint or a delineation standpoint for you guys to...
I thought I read it in the statutes.
No, they, yeah, they do not have to. When they have to have it is when it's more than five acres. If it's more than five acres or, and not a resident, you know, a residence on it and things of that nature. But if it's, if there's no resident, let's just say you have a lot and there's no residence on it, then it needs to be fenced, okay? But if there's a, if there is a resident, and it's five acres or less, if there is a residence on it, that is not a requirement, the rest of that requirement does not apply. You may choose to put whatever, you know, from a county standpoint, you may choose to do whatever you deem appropriate. But I do want, can I make a point about enforcement, 'cause I think this is super important and we've been mis, you know, shockingly, we've been misquoted on this, we are not going to be looking to go up and down the beach to try and remove people from property. These things must be complaint driven. So, you know, the owner or the owner's registered agent must be the one to make a decision or to file a complaint. We're simply not going to do that, it wouldn't make sense otherwise, and I think it's contrary to the law from that standpoint. But we have heard that, so people maybe that don't understand, they think that we're, you know, we're gonna go down and say, hey, do you live on this piece of property, we're gonna move you. That's not the case. So it must be driven, it's not proactive, it is response driven.
Just a statement, if I were coming into Florida and I was a new visitor and I go down and I see sign after sign and, you know, we're there, you know, five hundred feet apart, how, I mean, it might be confusing because we all have the right to, already to walk in the water's edge on the, on the wet sand, so, I mean, on the dry sand, excuse me. So we all have that right right now, but if you see all these signs, I just see it as confusing to think that maybe you couldn't have that right as a visitor and as a citizen to walk in the water. So, I mean, I'm trying to make it look, I mean, we're trying to solve it so it's not confusing to our visitors and it's...
Well, it's confusing to me, so I think it's relatively, it's confusing to them.
Well, you know what?
Yeah, I understand, right.
It's just sad. It's sad to be sitting here and thinking of people getting arrested on the beach. It's sad to think that the beautiful aesthetic beauty of our area would, would have to be in the situation where we're gonna see sign after sign.
Right.
I mean, it's really hard on me because I was here when there was, you know, hardly anyone and the beauty, and we have the most beautiful beaches in the world and how we would, what a clutter of the signs is just beyond me, but I understand people's rights too.
I wanna, I wanna separate this, just to be clear for just a second, because one of the things that's being said is the law abolishes customer use, that is not what the law does. It changes the, and I know you know that, but for the sake of continuity, that we know it as well too, it abolishes the process or the Walton County's ordinance, and then you have a process that you're moving forward. I think that's, I think that's the crux of it, you know, is that from a policy board's position, customer use still applies. And y'all are working through the, or as a property rights issue. From a criminal issue, a criminal trespass, criminal law issue, I'm bound by what is in place now. And so even again, with the water, that's been a little bit, I, not to bore you, but if you had, have you have seen the number of calls, complaints with every manner of deviation humanly possible, asking, will you arrest for this, will you arrest for that? Will you arrest for this, will you arrest for that? You know, we have to be reasonable to the best of our ability. And so what we have said pretty uniformly to the people that are now continuing to press for an arrest, you know, we have, just to be clear, we have people that say, listen, I'm gonna stake my four corners of my property and you will go out around the water because of Florida, you know, they were getting submerged lands and some of that stuff. We're just not gonna do that. We think the reasonable and fair and within my ability to set this standard is that wet sand. And wet sand, again, is where the surf is continually breaking during the day, not where it was wet from rainfall at the night, not the highest point of tide that hadn't dried out because it's now in the morning, but where the water's breaking, and that changes through the day. But I think the public can look at that, they, as you said, Commissioner, they have to be able to reasonably understand the rules that are being given to them. So I don't know, I don't know another way to do it than that at this point.
Well, I have an issue with one thing you said, is putting the signs in the wet sand. You just stated that the wet sand changes during the day. I don't think that we should put it at low tide, if, and I understand, I'm against any sign on the beach, I want everybody to know that, even the homeowners, no offense to y'all, but as Commissioner Jones says, it's going to destroy our beaches. I think if, and federal court says we have to allow them to put it on the dry sand, is that what it said?
Yes, sir. So our previous sign ordinance was a complete ban on signs on the sandy portion of the beach. We did allow signage on the toe, at the toe of the dune, but we did have a complete ban on the sandy portion of the beach, and the federal court said that our complete ban was not justified. But the court did say that we could adopt reasonable regulations to, you know, fit the policy concerns that we have, specifically the protection of endangered species, safety and aesthetics. And that's what we're trying to do with these new regulations.
So Commissioner, I wanna make a point, I wasn't advocating for the placement of signs in the water, I don't think you, I just wanna be clear for the, the honest here, I'm not advocating for that. What I was saying was there are people that have done that, we've had them remove, there are people that wanna do that. I'm absolutely not advocating for putting signs in the water and the wet sand.
It's not lying.
Sheriff, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, if it's even true, I had heard that Oaklous County has tried to compromise and have a twenty-foot buffer for the wet sand area landmark, and that seems to be acceptable by most of the owners on the beach. Have you heard anything?
What I heard, a previous version of that from, I think, last year, maybe two years ago, they were actually twenty feet, not from the wet sand, but approximately twenty feet of the wet sand, that was, I think that's the crystal, is it crystal?
Yeah, and I could have it wrong, but I believe that Oaklous Sheriff implemented a policy with twenty...
He did, what he actually used was, we actually chose the same policy that they used, which is the, but it, just to be clear, it's not twenty foot above that, it's actually, it's about twenty feet from the water line is what it boils down to. That's the one that when the court said that the sheriff could do that, that it makes sense, but, but we are, I'll just tell you, I'm probably getting sued in regard to this as well too, because we have said that, you know, we're not going to try and ascertain where the mean high tide water line is every time we come out there, even if it's in the water six hours of the day. So there are people that do not like that version of it as well too. But I do think even the, most property owners, I think the general public can understand that from our standpoint, I don't know what else we can do other than try and be reasonable in this approach.
I have a question, just for my information, a lot of fake news out there and I like to run down rumors. Have we had anyone approach someone on the beach with a gun and, have you, has your office dealt with any gun violence?
No, we have received those, we have received those types of calls before, right? We have never ascertained one where that happened or that was the impetus of that, not on a public beach or during the customary issue. We, like you, probably have heard many stories of that, we've gone back and tried to run those things down and sometimes they have a tendency to grow, but that has not been the case. And, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to diffuse these, to mediate a reasonable solution between the property owners and the, and the public.
Okay. Any other questions for the sheriff? Any other questions for the sheriff?
One question is, how are you gonna know? How are you gonna know if it's the property line unless, unless a surveyor set that post? How are you gonna know?
Yeah, it's extremely difficult, and, and in there lies the problem. That's why we're not gonna bother with two to three feet on one side. Our plan at this point is, the DEP survey that they have, the certified, where it starts at a certain area, that they can put a marker and come down, that's not a permanent fix thing, right? It's not at the, it's not at the seaward side, it is at the, at the, the toe of the dune side. So if, if they pull, for instance, their property line is relatively straight, let's assume that it is, going north and south, that's, that was, Commissioner, that was kinda my point about not worrying about, are you standing right here? Are you standing right there? But if you're 25 feet away from the edge, that, that's pretty reasonable, we can, you know, that, that makes sense that they would be on that side. That is not going to satisfy, I, I realize that's gonna be unsatisfactory to a lot of folks.
Now, if we continue on with our customary use, and we are, we're doing it as soon as we can, I feel, after talking with the attorney. Now, and we are in the process of taking this before a court.
Right.
You know, do you have, I mean, what is the, what is your policy on enforcing if it's in litigation?
I think the driving factor for enforcement litigation really boils down to this. Is it, is it reasonable to believe, do we have evidence to believe that the state of Florida says this can result in a successful prosecution? That really is what it, part of this is gonna boil down to. So if I have, if I am informed or I am told in such a manner that they will believe it would be difficult or not result in a successful process, prosecution, then I don't think that I can, in good conscience, advocate for a criminal arrest. Now, that doesn't mean we still wouldn't go down there, we still wouldn't try and mediate this. This is not changing the property owners' rights, what they may or may not have in that regard. It just means the sheriff's office is not going to take someone to jail for that, right? So we're waiting to get that final, you know, to ascertain that. I'll tell you, our attorneys have looked at it backwards and forwards. We have an opinion at this point, but we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. But I have, today I have to go with what I know absent that. Now, there is a pretty, a pretty strong argument to be made that while this is in, when the policy board for the county says that they believe something is in effect, and I realize that's property law, right? And if the state was to say, and it's obviously pending a, or will be pending a lawsuit, that does change the dynamics of it, because it's very difficult when the policy board says, we believe this is in place, that, that sends a message to the public that it is open, right? And so when you start making criminal arrests, you know, intent is one of those things we consider, are you willfully and intentionally trying to do this? It does, it does pay a factor in this type of situation. So we will decide that based on what the final meeting with the state attorney's office tells us, you know, and, and if, if they're, if they believe that this results in successful prosecution and there is no other, no other avenue to resolve the issue, then we're gonna do it. But I am desperately hoping that the last resort of any of this results in an arrest. Because then, unfortunately, what happens is the sheriff's office becomes the story, and a deputy sheriff who's out there simply trying to maintain the peace is now becoming a land surveyor and setting in a flashpoint between multiple policy boards. It's not a, not a conducive position for us to be in. But that's our duty, and we're gonna do it to the best of our ability to do it. And, and I hope to have a, a final statement on this from that standpoint with the, with the state sometime this week.
Any other questions from the board? Sheriff, if you don't mind, would you hang tight a little bit, 'cause we're fixing to open it up, there may be some questions.
Absolutely, certainly.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I know we're gonna probably have quite a few people who wanna talk about this, I understand you'd be the first one.
Can we?
Did they by chance have a sign-in sheet for that, that wanted to talk on this? No? Okay.
Can we discuss, I mean, express our opinions now, or wait till after the public?
I think we ought to just allow the public and then come in with our opinions. Okay. Young lady in the back.
Lori Reichenbach, R.E.I.C.H.E.N.B.A.C.H. Thank you for having the share. First, the best news I heard was that the private homeowner does not have to post signs. With that being said, as you contemplate water's edge and toe of the dune signs, I'm gonna respectfully ask you to consider no signs at the water's edge. Specifically, our sea turtles come out of the water and their vision is almost blinded. They see well in the water, it's like looking through Coke bottle bottoms once they hit land. They do not back up, they simply move forward. So even if you have a pole that's four inches in diameter, and if it's firmly in the ground and they knock into it, they are as likely to make a U-turn, return to the sea, and dump anywhere from 80 to 130 eggs into the water, lost turtles. We already have a very slim margin of those that hatch and make it to adulthood, so that's a big loss of potential life. Of course, they could hit it and maybe go around it and venture on up to the toe of the dune. That's why we work hard at knocking down sandcastles. A sandcastle will send a turtle into the, the water again, and they may come ashore somewhere else to nest, or they just may dump it in, then that's it for that, that nesting situation. So if we were being reasonable for both public sea turtles and the private homeowner, if we have to allow signs, then can we please keep them at the toe of the dune? 'Cause at least if a turtle has made it that high, it's a long way back to the water, and they are likely to adjust and build their nest right there. But if that's the first thing they meet coming right out onto wet sand, they're, they're probably gonna head back out. So that would be my request.
Ms. Lori?
Yes.
This is a federal court order that tells us we have to allow this in the, you know, not just at the toe of the dune.
Mm-hmm.
It's not my opinion, but my question to you is, how do you feel about leaving them at night or taking them in at night?
Well, for the sake of the turtle, we'd have to take them in at night, because that's when the highest majority of our turtles come on board to nest, at dusk and prior to sunrise. So during those hours, anything that's going to obstruct their journey, especially as they're exiting the water, should, should be out of the way. And I know that we, as a county, have talked about allowing our vendors to stack neatly their chairs, and we've all took, come to, to that reasonable conclusion that right now, is that perfect? No. But at least it's high enough up in the sand that a turtle has area up there to go ahead and pick a spot. You know, if the world was perfect, we'd say clean the beaches up of everything every time. But if we're gonna be reasonable, we're gonna compromise, we're gonna work on this together. If we can maintain and keep our signs only at the toe of the dune, as we allow vendors to keep their chairs, we allow people, you know, we, we got boats parked up there, you know, whatever we're gonna allow, but nothing should be at the water's edge. And in fact, forget about the turtles, you know, things work their way out of the sand. And, you know, there are quite a few people who pick up trash along the way, and we pick up poles and fence posts, and we pick up logs and drag them as best we can, because what you have is this very weapon-like object floating and moving with the waves, and, you know, we can talk about killing a kid, we can talk about a head injury here, all you need is one of those loose in the water and come back in, and then the county's got a whole different kind of lawsuit.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lori.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question while the next question's coming up? Not so much as legal. Suppose that homeowners do put permanent signs down there, and a turtle were to run into it and it killed it, would, who would be responsible? Would it be the county or would it be the person that's, or taking?
Right, it's very likely that the county and the homeowner could be responsible.
So if we allow those to go up, we could be responsible if there's a taking as well?
Right, that, that is the possibility.
Mr. Chapman, could I ask a question, please, for a second? I think we're gonna be asking more questions of the sheriff. I have an empty chair right here with a microphone, would be eager for him to sit here and answer the questions, if you would like to, from a microphone, whether than coming back and forth?
Won't you play? It's not for all.
I took a bath.
Okay. All right. Bob Brooke.
Bob Brooke, B.R.O.O.K.E. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have two, two things I'd like to speak to. Number one, the sheriff very clearly spelled out the difficulties of locating the property lines for the sheriff's department and his deputies. I'd like to look at it from the other side and, and say, what is the difficulty of the tourists from finding out where the property lines are without marks, without signs or some kind of marking showing where they are? In order to keep the tourists from, from being liable to trespass and being persecuted, persecuted, prosecuted for trespass, I think it's equally as important that the tourists know where the lines are as the sheriff's deputies and the sheriff's force as well. That's number one. Number two, the turtle issue. First of all, I don't know why you wanna have a four, four-inch by four-inch signpost, you could use a PVC post, it would make it a lot less dangerous to any vehicles at night that might go by, if, if in fact they stay out at night. But you can, and there's plenty of bright people in the, the universities around here, the colleges, you can actually sit down and calculate what the probability is that a turtle is gonna hit one of those signs. You've got the parameters, let's just say, on the pub, on the potentially private beaches, you've got 20 out of the 26 miles of beach, you know how big the signpost is, you know how big, take the upper limit on what the size of the turtles are, take the number, let's say you have somewhere between 100 and 150 nestings a year, calculate all that, you can calculate exactly what the probability of a turtle hitting one of these, and I think people have a sense, at least from what I hear, that it's much, much higher than it will turn out to be. So I think that you owe it to yourselves, when you make the argument, or to the constituents that make the argument on either side, to have one of your mathematicians calculate what the probability is that turtle is gonna hit one of these signs, and make an estimate, make your worst-case estimate of how many signs are gonna be on the beach, and put this, this alarm about, or the alarming talk about turtles being hurt by signs to rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Suzanne, you'll be next. I thought I said I was hand come up over here, you'd be behind, Ms. Suzanne. Bill, you're next, after that gentleman.
Hey, I'm Claire Kuhn, K.U.A.N. I just wanna agree with everything Lori so eloquently said about the signs and sign turtles, as far as Mr. Brooks. I walk the beaches and I look for turtle tracks, and I can tell you that if there's something out there, some of those girls are gonna run right into it. I've seen them run into beach chairs, boats, all manner of things. Yes, it doesn't happen like every time, but it, it only takes one time, and it, those, they're endangered creatures, and we don't need to lose any, any nest, even if it's one chance in a thousand. So I would hope that beachfront owners would at least consider that and that we would not put signs down at the front. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, Ms. Harris.
I guess I, I guess I'm just glad in 25 years, no turtle ran into my volleyball net that's been there day and night, all that time, I just, if I would be responsible for the taking. What I wanna know is, what about people who live on the beach, who own beachfront houses, who are only here now and then? I heard Mike say that, you know, only the owner or their representative can report trespassing. So if there's nobody there at night, who puts out the sign at night and who picks it up? And I saw a sign, I saw some pictures that were made last weekend on a beach, on a private beach where the owner was here, and it was in his two beach chairs, with his chair between them, on his private beach. People came, sat in them, brought their cooler, on the little table were four empty glass beer bottles, and they were out on the beach drinking beer out of the bottle. He didn't call the sheriff, he didn't report it, he just made some pictures of it and said, you know, I don't mind if they're sitting in the water, but I wish that some patrol would come by from 10:00 in the morning until they left at 4:00 in the afternoon and remind them that glass bottles don't belong on the beach either. There's no way for people to know for these houses that don't do that. Now, Sydney, I ask you a question, because I heard what Mike said, I heard what you said, but you may have a no trespassing sign on your property that meets the Florida statute. And if you want to put two, I don't think y'all can stop it. So what I'm saying is, come to something reasonable. So we don't have orange and black signs, and y'all aren't involved in another lawsuit. I don't, Edgewater sure doesn't want a sign down in the wet sand that can be five feet off the ground that's orange with big black letters saying no trespass. I think if y'all are reasonable, then the people will be reasonable. But if you pass a sign that says you gotta put it down there at night and take it up at night, you're gonna be in another lawsuit, and people are gonna be putting them in the ground deep, because they can't take them up at night. But if you put it in the middle of your property, one sign on each side, in the middle of somebody's property that said, had the engineer's signature on it, that, where he staked it, and you could really show where your thing is, and it just, in nice words, said, private beach of so-and-so, and have, and have some way to know how far it is, so-and-so from this feet forward is private property. Then if the sheriff comes, he can easily look at the sign in the middle up, upland of your beach, and you can stop me, Ms. Joan, oh no, it's Bill now, you can look at the sign, and the sheriff can take his GPS and say, yeah, it's 20 feet from right here is what they own, and here, and, and file your thing with the sheriff's office. And that's so much easier, y'all are gonna have all these fights on the beach, people are gonna be YouTube-ing everybody, cussing and screaming at them, and it's gonna be all over YouTube. And it's gonna take five years to rebuild the businesses down here when the bad publicity hits here and tourists quit coming.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Yes, sir.
All right, Kevin Boyle, B.O.Y.L.E.
What was his name again?
Kevin Boyle, B.O.Y.L.E. I'm here mostly because I feel like the guilt trip my mother would give me if I didn't say something, as my mom has volunteered with the South Walton Turtle Watch for almost a decade, and I, I just feel that the previous comments dismissing the hard work and the hundreds and thousands of hours that these volunteers do on a daily basis, much before anyone is on the beach in the morning to make sure that there aren't any obstructions for these turtles. I understand that there's probably a way to find out the probability of a turtle running into a pole, but I think it's very dismissive to think that these are just people that are creating some sort of emotional unnecessary feedback, saying that these things won't happen. I know that my mom is greatly affected by the success of those turtles nesting, I know that. There are people like Glenn Seewell, who work, wake up every morning and have woken up every morning for the last 20 years and walk that beach to make sure that there aren't obstructions. And so I do think that as we look at the possibility of putting signs in the wet sand, I do think that you should really take in to respect those people that spend morning in and evening out, and especially people like Lori, who have dedicated their, their free time to make this happen. So I ask you respectfully, consider that.
All right, thank you. Bill, I think you're next, and Lee Moore behind Bill, and sir, you're behind Ms. Lee Moore, okay?
Bill Flotcher, F.L.E.T.C.H.E.R. If I'm understanding you correctly, they are allowed to put a sign at the water's edge. And I, I think we all hate signs, but I don't know why you can't put one at the toe of the dunes and put specific distances from there to the water line where your property line is, rather than putting one in the water. I would hate to see that. Also, I haven't heard, I know you've got a particular size sign that you have to allow. What size posts are they allowed to put in?
There's, there's no restrictions on the size of post.
Oh, wow.
As currently drafted.
10 by 10 or 6 by 6, but I prefer you get it anywhere.
Yeah, as it's currently drafted, you'd have to bring it in at night, so obviously that would be a limiting...
See, I think that's impractical, but anyway, that's, that's my...
And I guess so, just so I can make sure that everybody's on the same page about what the current draft has in it. So right now, the, the size of the signs is limited to 18 by 24 inches, and this is in the current draft of the ordinance.
Give us the page number.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's page 12, page 12 and 13 of the draft. So right now, as drafted, signs would have to come in at night, and that's to be compliant with our current regulations on leave no trace. The signs could not be permanently affixed, again, so they could be brought in every night. The size of the signs are limited to 18 inches by 24 inches. Signs must be placed at least 250 feet apart, or at the corner of the property's boundaries if the property line is less than 250 feet. A sign should not be placed seaward of the mean high water line or the erosion control line, and then there are regulations about the, the material and the colors. So they, they must be white, the text color can be blue, a teal... So they must be white, the text color can be blue, a teal, or a black, and the signs must be made of a wood or a wood-like, or a material made to look like wood. And just for Mr. Flotcher's too, so this is only dealing with signs on the sandy portion of the beach. At the toe of the dune, you can have.
So theoretically, you could have a four-foot by four-foot box with an 18 by 24-inch sign on it.
I'm sorry?
You could have a four-foot by four-foot base with a post and an 18 by 24-inch sign.
During the day, but it'd have to come in at night.
See, that would be a huge obstruction for these turtles. I mean, four-by-four post, I don't think would be a huge problem at the toe of the dunes, but.
And just, so just to remind the commissioners, and I know because we've had so many hearings, the testimony of members of the public who deal with Turtle Watch and also from Melinda is that the biggest concern for the sea turtles is at night.
Yes, I did that for several years. Thank you.
Let me make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying a sign at the toe of the dunes that says, "My property line goes out 50 feet, my property line goes out 100 feet."
So the deputy or whoever's coming to that property, they could look at that sign, should have on there from here to X number of feet to the water line?
That would be nice, except we've been ordered by federal court that they are allowed to put them on the sandy portion of the beach. So this is not something we, we just sat around and said, hey, let's change this. The federal court ordered us to allow them to put them on the sandy portion of the beach.
Do we know how many property owners' lines go all the way to the water?
I don't know. Beach activities knows anything.
That would be an interesting number to know.
We analyzed all 900 property parcels, and understanding that a lot of them do not go to the Flotcher, as you well know, there's probably about, somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% that don't. Some of that's arbitrary appreciation depending on time, too, because a lot of them, you know, pulls back at certain times. So I'm going to say a guesstimate, which is you would add to, I think, roughly about 15% do not. And in some places, it's fairly significant to lie as far as not, you know, stop pretty sure. That's what makes it so dubious and apprehensive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Sidney, would you paraphrase the judge's findings?
I mean, it was a very long order, but.
It was like, no, let me ask you specifically.
Right, so the issue with our previous sign ordinance was that it was a complete ban on signs on the sandy portion of the beach. And the court ruled that we did not have a valid justification for that complete ban on signs.
Complete ban on signs on the sandy?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, there's one of the caveats.
Okay, I want to make a comment first before we get started. Sidney, I've got some concerns. I understand right now it's proposed to come in at night and not be permanently fixed, it's basically a sandwich sign, right?
A sandwich sign would comply with the drafted provisions.
Right, and so without identifying a post, which apparently right now the ordinance does not allow us to allow the post going in the ground, just a sandwich.
Well, you could put the post in the ground, it's just you'd have to take it in at night.
But then again, we didn't identify whether it's three-inch, four-inch, if they come out there with a 20-inch.
If you'd like, you can easily, we can easily make that change to the ordinance. That's a relatively minor change.
And I do have a concern, now that I've sat here and listened to what the sheriff had to say, the GPS is not as definitive as you would think it would be. However, from what I understand, and let me paraphrase what you said, Sheriff, is that if there's a dispute and they're within a foot and a half, two foot either side of the line, there would be no action taken. Yes, yes. Come on up here to the mickey, mickey.
So, yeah, I mean, that's a very good synopsis of that, but I want to be clear because I want to elaborate on something Commissioner Anderson said, and I think it is important to go back to it. That's the exact reason that we would not even attempt to try and take an enforcement action in a two-to-three-foot area because it's not pragmatic. If it's a three-foot plus or minus, so if your signs are going back in, let's just say you have sandwich boards and you have to put them there or wherever, we give the benefit of the doubt that the sign is somewhat correct, right, when it goes out? But I can't, two to three feet, we would certainly not try and attempt to make an arrest in that regard. That's where you get into that, hey, I'm 15, I'm 20 feet. And even with that, so just for the point of clarity, that is the absolute last resort. So for you to be arrested for trespassing, it would have to be blatantly obvious. A deputy would come here and talk to you and say, Ms. Commander, listen, you're, you know, 20-some-odd feet over here and, you know, we're not talking about a line here one way or the other. And then you would have to say, no, I don't think so, I'm not going. So there'll be no surprise enforcement, and it shouldn't be that way. Generally, say, hey, you know, you need to step on, if you have a sign or an area of, you know, 10 or 15 feet without a sign, whatever, that's not disputed, let's move over here. But that is, that is absolutely the last course of action. And going back to the issue about being proactive, that's not my opinion, that's Florida law in regard to, as you well know, Commissioner, about the having a complainant for trespassing. So somebody has to be the complaint, because somebody has to show up for court, somebody says, yes. Now, it can be their agent, it can be, I know many, many people contact us about security yards, that may be their agent. It may be a neighbor. So to go back to Ms. Harris's point a minute ago, you can address a neighbor to have them do that, you can address somebody. But it has to be obvious, it has to be written, and we have to know who it is from that standpoint. But I want to, I want to just, again, with absolute clarity, say to people, deputies are not going to be walking up and down the beach arresting people because they're on the other side of a sign. We're going to try and resolve this to the best of our ability. It's going to have to be pretty blatant to get to that point.
Sheriff, what difference does it make when the sign is not there at night? What does that, how does that impede your ability as opposed to a sign being there during the day? Because I think the verbiage is, I know the word reasonable is in there. We have to give the, it has to be a reasonable, I wish I would have printed it, but you have to have the reasonable ability to allow the private, to let the public know that's private property. And also, our customary use ordinance says what you can do on private property.
What you can.
And what you can do on public. So how do we get there day or night?
So night is obviously considerably more difficult. I mean, I think for a myriad of reasons. So when a deputy sheriff goes down at night, you know, you take that six foot and then you amplify it by about 10 or 15, right, 20 feet, whatever. Here's, so let me give you an example of how we would try and resolve an issue. Let's say Commissioner Jones is, has a burn, a burn thing, or a, whatever, you're down at the beach, you're four or five, you're down at the beach, and it's at night. And you say, well, I'm not on, I'm not on private property. Well, here would be the first de facto thing. Do you own this property? No, you do not. So we know that upfront, right? We know that you do not necessarily own this piece of property. So then the question would be, we've probably got there, more than likely, because somebody has called us and said, you're on Commissioner Anderson's property. Even if Commissioner Anderson's not there, we would go down and say, hey, Ms. Jones, you have this, you know, this party going on right here, this is actually, you know, Commissioner Anderson's property, and we would ask them to move. Now, let's just say we got into, I'm not going to move. I'm not going to do it, I'm just going to show you, I'm not going to do it. Well, you know, that moves into a whole different realm of failure attempt to comply. I'd still have to determine whether or not they're supposed to be there, right? But if you know that you don't have a legal standing to be there, that becomes, I shouldn't say that because there's many people that have legal standing there. If you, if you know that that matter is in dispute, that's significantly different than, hey, I didn't know, I set up here, I thought this was okay for me to be here, yes, I'll move, and I would suggest your deputies would probably help you move from that standpoint. But we absolutely do not want to try and hold somebody accountable, particularly at night, and that's a great point, that's night is much, much more difficult below the toe of the dune, that's going to be very, very difficult to handle.
That is my problem, Sam, is not having to come in at night.
Right.
Well, my concern with the, we've got to get these things fixed. My concern with the sandwich boards is, a lot of these homes are rentals, and you're expecting somebody to come down here from Oregon to go out there and put it out wherever he wants to put it out. He doesn't necessarily know where the lines are. But if there's a permanent one at the toe of the dune, then I think with whatever verbiage the court's told us, we can't regulate the verbiage on there, so whatever they want to put in there, at least based upon your GPS capabilities, you can pretty much come out there on a complaint and say, okay, he's sitting here, you pull it up, yeah, you're sitting 20 feet off the line.
Yeah, I even think of, you know, again, I've had land surveyors wear me out this week about the exact verbiage we're going to say here or there. Here's what I say. If you have a permanent sign, for instance, if that's what you have up at the toe, then at least we can generally say, here it is. Okay, we can argue about two feet. That's significantly different than arguing about 20 and 30 feet, right? So a tie goes, a tie without intent goes to the public, right? I mean, that's fair enough. We have to be clear, we have to know before we take any kind of enforcement action. If you don't, now, again, but if you willfully know that and you're attempting to be difficult for the purpose of doing that, that becomes a whole, that's a whole separate issue, that's a whole separate issue.
Well, my question has been, and nobody's been able to answer it, is how many of these 930-something beachfront owners are actually taking the position of putting out signs and fences or whatever they try to put out there? I don't know if that's half of them or a third of them, and it's whether or not we're doing something that's just keeping the same go-away.
Attorney, how many people do you represent?
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute.
More than two dozen.
Okay.
And I would say probably a dozen have signs out, but there's only ones around public access.
All right, all right.
Did he say two dozen? I'm sorry. Did he say two dozen? I'm sorry.
Yeah, two dozen.
Back to, can I interject something here? Back to our scenario, now, you wouldn't come down, you wouldn't have officers come down and ask me to move unless Commissioner Anderson complained.
Unless there was a complaint from the owner or his registered agent for some reason to do that. I mean, there's just, because how do I know if you have permission to be down there or not? That's, you know, you could, and particularly, by the way, if you get into some of the areas where there's multiple people in a condominium, use that for an example, any one person there can give approval. Now, I'm sure some of the attorneys are cringing when they're there, but from a purely criminal standpoint, if 20 people say, you know, live in this complex and one of them says, yes, I don't mind, you know, you might have an issue with your homeowners association, but from a criminal standpoint, it's over. It's over. We absolutely would not make an arrest where that matter is in dispute or one of the residents there gave permission. So I know everybody here lives in peace and harmony, but let's just say hypothetically that Commissioner Nipper invited, you know, somebody to come over here and, you know, Commissioner Chapman didn't like them and said, hey, we don't just let anybody here, says, well, you know, I hate it, but it's, it is what it is.
Okay. Sheriff, thank you.
One question.
No, I have one.
You said, and I may have misunderstood you, you said that you could, you could tell if there was a permanent sign at the toe of the dune. Is that what you said?
Yeah, what I said, it would be certainly easier to tell from the toe of the dune. I mean, you know, it would certainly be much easier to tell from that standpoint, you know, and we're still eyeballing it.
So if we allowed a permanent sign at the toe of the dunes and sandwich board signs out in the sandy portion, you could still tell if that sandy, if that sandwich board sign was in the right place? If it's a straight line, a line between me and you, and the sandwich board's way over there, then you could still tell because you're looking straight up that property.
Correct, because that's reasonable, and that goes back to the idea, I'm not going to argue with you over two or three feet. So just using your example, if you lined it up with, if you have some permanent marker on the backside that line it up with, you know, whether that's a house, an air conditioning unit, a post, whatever that is, obviously that's going to make it easier for us, then at least we could say your sandwich board is 20 feet out of your, you know, so, yes, I mean, certainly, every type of identifier helps. I'm not advocating for one or the other, but one that you know is accurate certainly makes a difference.
Okay. I would like, with the board to consider, we've been at it for about 45 minutes on this one topic, kind of look at maybe finishing this part of it up by noon. And if we do that, we're going to have to consider going from three minutes down to two minutes for public comment. So what's the board's wishes?
How many people want to speak?
I have no idea.
How many people?
I know there's one, two, three, four, and I think Lee, you're, there you are, there's five, and somebody at the back, that's six, so that's 18 minutes, that's going.
Why don't we say till quarter after, they'll give us 30 minutes for us to say what we want to say and for them to finish up, that way.
All right, that'd be fine. We'll go to 12:15 on this part of the hearing, and then we'll shut public comment down and then y'all figure out what y'all want to do.
And this is just on the signs, we still have to.
Just on the signs, that's all we're talking about today is the signs. Everything else has been.
And then we'll deal with the fire districts after, okay.
Of course, okay. Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Commissioners, Lee Moore. I have a question, Commissioner Chapman, that may be best for Ms. Noyes, I'm not sure, but Ms. Noyes said that you cannot regulate the content of sign. So if you allow, can you allow only property line marking signs to be permanent? That's right. So, so if you allow any signs to be permanent on the sandy beach, you're going to have to allow all of them to be permanent if the owner so desires or whomever. So I can think back to the first meeting on this and the TDC showed some signs, I mean, some pictures of signs back before all of this happened, and a whole bunch of those signs were not property mark, property delineating signs. So I just want to be, that everyone's clear on that, that if you allow that for any, you have to allow it for all. So if it says chairs 20 bucks or a day or whatever, they can stick that thing out there in a concrete base or whatever it takes to make a sign permanent on the beach, which you can't really make a sign permanent on the beach, but, so I would just, for the sake of time, reiterate everything I said at the last meeting on this. I do think it's a, it's very much a potential turtle obstruction, and that should be given a lot of respect in accordance. And also, someone mentioned earlier that they can just put a PVC post, PVC pipe for the post. That was the whole point when I suggested that the signs be required to be made of wood or a material that looks like wood. I'll tell you, there's not much that looks much less like wood than a PVC pipe. So that's what we're trying to avoid if we have to put signs out there by having these. So I don't know if you have to get more specific and clear, but, and I'm not criticizing the county, but I would even say the example signs that were here last week do not comport with being wood look. No part of them did, so, and that can make a huge difference, a huge difference in the aesthetics and the way these things look. I think all of this today is just very interesting. The fact that it's this difficult to do this says a lot, in my opinion, and I'm speaking, again, as a private citizen only, as to whether you should do, we should have to do this or not. It's just crazy. And I will say too, Commissioner Commander made a good point at the last meeting, and I hope that the commissioners don't think that anyone that, I can't speak for everybody, but I haven't heard anyone criticizing you all that this is happening, when you said, you know, we're just here, we just have to deal with it, we didn't cause it, and I agree with that, no one's saying that, we're just trying to all get through this the best we can. So I hope you'll really strongly consider not allowing the signs to be permanently installed.
Thanks for understanding, Lee.
Yes, sir. You're next. All right, throw your hands up so I know who wants to talk. All right, you're next. Ken, you're next. Coy, you're the last. Oh, I'm sorry, Lacy, you're right there. Lacy's the last.
Yes, my name is Derek Berube, B-E-R-U-B-E, and it's the short Derek, not the oil one. It's been interesting in listening to this, and I guess one observation, and I'll be relatively quick, is I heard the sheriff say, well, I'll say signs don't arrest people. In order for there to be an enforcement action, a sheriff's deputy is going to have to be called out by a complainant. I don't want to conflate customary use with signs, so I think that there has been enough, or there is enough of an instance where a permanent sign on the beach has the potential to cause a sea turtle to hit it and turn away and further damage the likelihood of those endangered species thriving. But I think, as the sheriff has said, if you have a permanent sign at the toe of the dune, and in order for there to be any kind of enforcement action, somebody has to be called, I think we can trust in the fantastic, responsible, and reasonable judgment of our law enforcement officers to evaluate that situation and determine whether or not somebody is beyond the two- or three-foot barrier of a private property line. And just by simple, if you wanted to, property owners, from a simple geometry perspective, if. if further inland on their property, they were to have some other point of reference, then it would be incredibly easy for a deputy to stand seaward, looking back, and they've got two frames of reference, one at the toe of the dune, one further up, and they can look at it and make a judgment, yes, this person is 15 feet inward on the private property, or in, outside of that two or three foot range. But I think, having signs up at night, I mean, it, it's, 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 like, convenient for people, but they don't do anything unless somebody's actually called. So I don't think having those, whether those signs are actually out there on the beach, really is immaterial. Once the law enforcement is there, that person can go stand at the sea, look back towards the, the land, and make a determination as to whether or not the person that's being accused of trespassing is indeed trespassing, and then work to hopefully get those people to move, as, as they rightfully should, because they are on, on private property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Morning Commissioners. Michael Nguyen, W-Y-N-N. My questions deal with the, what I'll call the five acre scenario outlined by Sheriff Atkinson. First, does the five acres refer to the owner's entire lot upon which his structures exist, to include his beach?
Yes, it would.
It would. Secondly, what I thought I heard was, it would be that the owner of that five acres or less is not required to place signage, but can?
If there's a residence.
If there's a residence, okay. So does that necessarily imply if the size is in excess of five acres, that you are required to place signage?
I, I think.
Sheriff.
Well, you're not required to place signage, I mean.
Sheriff, you're nodding your head, yes.
Seaweed five acres, then out in the, and there's not entitled residence on it, yeah, or if it gets to a certain size, it's not fenced, but I don't think we have anything to see.
Well, specifically, if you have a condo complex, let's say, that is in excess of five acres to include its beach frontage. Does that mean?
My, my position on, my position on this is, it's going to be just treated like every other one, from that standpoint. So, that, that's kind of probably the quickest, easiest way to say that.
Which means what?
Which means that as long as I can ascertain whether there's one sign or no signs, if we can ascertain what your east or west property boundary is, we're trying to do that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I can't advocate for Ken signing, you know, signing, but I won't be able to do that.
Understood, okay. Lacy, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Kent Safrit, hopping green in sams, on behalf of multiple landowners, beachfront landowners, last name S-A-F-R-I-T. Couple points I wanted to make from, from what the sheriff said. Not going to prosecute or make any arrests, and that's a successful prosecution. That's the key. So you've got to provide the landowners with what they need to be able to, to give the sheriff a, a case in which a prosecution can be had. Eyeballing from the, the waterline to the dune by a sheriff's deputy is not going to result in a successful prosecution. The court's going to throw that out in a heartbeat. You can't look at, you know, and that assumes that the property boundary is at a 90-degree angle. Some of these property boundaries have angles, they turn. You know that from a plat. So you need some kind of signage out there on the east-west boundary, at least one sign, so that the sheriff's office can line up those two points and have a straight line. Otherwise, your eyeballing is not going to result in a successful prosecution. Two, the court order says signs must be allowed. It's got to be reasonable. And the, the resolution that's come up with is move them in at night. The question is, do you think that's reasonable? Do you think a federal judge is going to think that's reasonable, when a, a deputy's going to come out and eyeball it from, from the water? I don't think so. I don't think a federal judge is going to do that. Now, do you have any legal opinions, because you've got three other attorneys involved in this case, that say that will meet the First Amendment requirements that the judge ordered? That's something to consider. There are costs to this. There are costs involved, attorney's fees involved, if you lose, and there's attorney's fees yet to be paid in, in the, in the prior case. So, you got to follow what the law is, not what you want to do, or what you think is reasonable in your own mind. You got to follow the law, otherwise, there's consequences of that, and there's cost to do it. Lastly, you got to think about the temporary aspect that goes to the unreasonable aspect. You've got absentee landowners. Who's going to, who, they got to hire somebody now to come in and put their temporary sign up each day? They got to hire a, a, a land surveyor every morning to come out, 7:00 AM, put the sign up in the right position, or hire some, somebody else to come out and just put it where they think it is? That's unreasonable. And again, I think a federal district court would agree with that. That's why you, you, you need to allow at least one permanent sign on the east-west boundary. Lastly, not allowing the permanent sign, and I think, as you heard, will not result in any successful prosecutions, or any kind of actual trespassing. It could result in the taking of private property. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there's St. Pete Beach case, where the sheriff refused to enforce the trespass laws on a private piece of property. Ultimately, that court found, US District Judge found, that that's what de facto taking of the property. Awarded the landowner $1.7 million, and there was other facts going along with that. And, and I want to say too, there's not a whole lot of issues going on here with the private property owners. It's mostly around the public beach accesses. That's where the real problem is. So the concern that you're going to see 700 signs going up across the beach, or 500, it's just, again, not the case. As I said earlier, I represent more than two dozen beachfront landowners, and, and very few have them up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Ms. Lacy, I think you're next. Ms. Bowman, you're behind her.
Lisa Valsh, B-O-U-S-A, white. You got it memorized. I'd just like to say that I, I too don't think you're going to see nearly as many signs as you hope to, or think, no, you don't hope to, you think you might. But a couple of things I'd like to mention. There's white sighting posts that are used by, for vendor zones, and similar, you know, things. I know vendor zones in particular. Maybe something like that would be a little bit helpful with the sheriff's office. For instance, if we had a sign at the toe of the dune, and then had a sighting post effectively that was maybe 15 or 20 feet away, so that it, it defined the emergency corridor, as an example that we, we currently have, then you could have a sighting post, and then all of a sudden, you've got within 20 feet a straight line. And now, that assumes a straight boundary, obviously, if it's, you know, angles, that, that creates a different thing. While I love the idea of wood signs, I think they're difficult to come by, depending on what the messages are, it can make lettering very, very small. I, I'd like to see you allow aluminum signs, just because they, you can still make an aluminum sign attractive. I don't know that you can make it look like wood, but they're much lighter weight, and easier, if you should decide that you're going to make people take them in and out. They're much less weight than trying to carry wood in and out, back and forth. So, let's see. Oh, I wanted to clarify, Sidney, please, if, the signs we're talking about right now, these rules are strictly for the dry sand, correct? Not the ones at the toe of the dunes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, we're waiting on this gentleman to come forward. I did want to clarify that. So, the signs at the, the signs at the toe of the dune? Can be permanent. So we're just talking about the signs on the dry portion of the beach. And as drafted, those signs on the dry portion of the beach would have to come in at night.
And the ones at the toe of the dune, it's optional. You know, if you don't want a sign, if you're not having issues, then, then let's plead with those people, please be cognizant of our, we're not saying we don't want people to have signs. We're saying that we want you to be cognizant of the beauty of our beaches, and if you don't need them, please, don't put them there.
Okay. Ms. Bowman?
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Okay, this federal law about marking your private property, that you have the right to put a sign on the corner of your property, does that federal law just say that, or does it mention the sand? It just, it just says that you have the right to mark your private property with a sign?
Well, so the, we've been talking about a federal court ruling, and so all the court did was look at our previous ordinance, which banned all signs, and the court said that that ban wasn't justified. So, the court didn't really give us any direction.
It didn't mention the word sand, it just said private property marking, right?
That actually wasn't even a part of the court's ruling.
Okay. So, I, this is just a huge manipulation of vocabulary and definition. Walton County currently, like the sheriff said, about 85% of the properties have surveys that say that they own all the way down to the wet waterline. And you can see this on the property appraiser when you click along. Some of them are really long, and some of them stop right at the dune line. So Walton County recognizes that those surveys are, they, the Walton County defines that as legal, that that person's survey is legal. Okay, so the state of Florida has just passed a rule that all private property ends at the vegetation line. So basically, that negates those 85% of people along the 38 coast that have a piece of paper that says they own all the way to the waterline, right? And this is why you all want to go against this ordinance, because you all favor these people who claim that they own down to the waterline. HB 651 actually says that all private property on all coasts ends where the vegetation line ends. So you guys are actually fighting against this, but then again, you override state law all of the time. So, let me get back to.
We could ask you one question, and we won't, we'll stop the clock right now. Can you give me the statute that says that?
The HB, House Bill 651? That's, is that, or is it 631?
The one that says that everybody's property stops at the vegetation line?
That is what House Bill 651 states, is that private property in, ends at the vegetation line.
Well, I, I wish.
Your lawyer?
I was nodding yes.
No, no, I was, I was nodding that. I, I wish.
I wish you were right.
For the case, but I don't believe.
Unfortunately, I, I haven't seen any bill.
I read it, that's what it said.
Where did you read it?
I read it online on the Florida, Florida House and Senate website.
Well, I'm sure we've got several lawyers in here that haven't read that.
Of course, why would they have read the law? Okay, so my point is, is that you were back, the Walton County said that these owners' private property surveys own all the way down to the waterline. And my point is, is that.
The Walton County, and whoever it was, St. Joe Atkinson, Wiley Blount, Angus G. Andrews with his timber lease, that came down here and sold a bunch of land that didn't legally belong to them. Anybody can draw, I can draw a picture around Canada, and then sell it to somebody and say, you own that, but that doesn't make it legal. All of these surveys that say these private property owners own all the way to the waterland, none of that is legal. Nobody had the right to sell the white sand south of the vegetation line. And so now, you're trying to fight against something that's actually more legal for the public, because you're profiting off of all of this illegal land development. So, this is just a master manipulation of vocabulary and definition. Thank you.
Sheriff? Just one quick thing, not delivered point. Our policy, just so you know, from a standpoint of, one of the things to help enforce, we do allow for a tape to be drawn out from a fixed point on the DEP survey, so that the tape could be pulled straight out. Now, again, that's not, you know, we're talking about a foot to the side, but that is another way, another avenue, and that's what we have adopted after having a few attorneys work on this in, in, in detail. The other thing, I just want to touch on the case that was cited, the St. Pete's case. There were other factors that decided in that case that decided that taking, because I think specifically the Crystal Dune case said that you were not entitled, the sheriff had the, 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 the authority not to do, not to enforce a trespassing down in the water, from that standpoint. So there were, I just want to be clear, and I'm sure he was clear about that as well, and he's nodding, we're on the same page, but that is, that was not the decide, the sole deciding factor in that case. And as such, Crystal Dunes, as far as our authority to enforce or not enforce trespass, has defined that. Counselor, you go with that?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for you, Sidney.
Yes.
Is it, by allowing signs at the toe of the dune on the property line, does that satisfy the court order?
So, Commissioner Anderson, you know, the court didn't tell us how to write this new ordinance. All, all the court did was explain that the previous ordinance we had adopted wasn't justified under First Amendment principles. So, we did take the court's order, and we did try to use that, and, you know, talk with staff, and come up with some reasonable regulations on the signs, in light of the court's order, but I, I can't tell you definitively that, you know, the court's going to say one way or another. Now, I do believe that the regulations that we've drafted are reasonable. These are reasonable time placement restrictions. But that's not something that, you know, I can, I can't tell you what the court is going to do, but I can tell you that I wouldn't bring an ordinance to you that I thought was unconstitutional.
So, if we put up, if we allowed a permanent sign at the toe of the dune on the property line, and we allowed a temporary sign, meaning bring it in at night, do you think that, and I'm asking for your legal opinion, because none of the sheriff's office are lawyers, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir, I am. I mean, and that's based on discussions with Melinda, who's our coastal resource, and I'm going to tie her wrong, but, I mean, Melinda deals with these issues. That's based on conversations we've had with Turtle Watch. It's based on our habitat conservation plan, and then also safety and aesthetic, or, well, safety concerns, really, for the signs being out at night. But yes, sir.
Well, the, the thing that bothers me, and, and if I'm, Sheriff, if I'm quoting you wrong, please tell me, you said you thought you could, that you could determine the property line by sighting it, if there was a permanent marker at the toe of the dunes?
Notwithstanding counsel's objection to line of sight, that's the more reasonable application. Anything you could do to make it work a little better?
Well, well.
And the tape, and, and again, that is the reason we allowed the tape in our policy, pulling from a fixed mark from somewhere up land.
And, and the thing that, you know, we're kind of at this damned if you do with this guy over here, and damned if you don't with the people that want to protect the turtles. And, and believe me, we've, we've, we've gone through quite a process working with people like Laurie and other of the Turtle Watch people, to try to, try to help them maintain our turtle, and increase our turtle population. And here, if we, if we allow permanent signs down on the sandy beach towards the water, and we have a turtle come in there and hits that sign and dies, we're going to be responsible for it legally. Is that right?
We could be, yes, sir.
But we accept that risk with the vendors, and every time we have public leaving their things out on the beach, even landward at the toe of the dune, because turtles nested there before, we're still in that situation every year.
But, but according to Ms. Laurie, that the closer you have that to the water's edge, the bigger probability of them running into it. Am I right? Am I quoting you right?
And also, we're telling everyone that you, it's your responsibility to get your things off the beach at night. We're not saying it's okay to have a sign that a turtle could run in, a permanent sign that a turtle could run into. We're telling vendors and everyone else, you take your stuff off the beach, because we want to protect our citizens, we want to protect our turtles.
Okay. I think public comment's over, so what's the board's wishes?
Mr. Chapman? I've been quiet a long time.
Well, okay.
There we are.
Let's get a motion in a second on the floor, and then we'll open up for discussion.
I'm prepared to do a motion.
You're prepared?
I'm not, I'd rather, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not prepared.
All right, let's just hear my motion, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay.
I would like to have an optional permanent sign at the toe of the dunes with optional descriptive verbiage of how far the property extends. We already have that, but, but I want to, you know, I want everybody to understand, this is optional. We're not saying, we're not saying everybody can get a sign today. It's optional. Then I would like to have an optional removable sandwich sign at the other property corner, wherever it is. Optional.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my, that's my motion.
So, if, if the board adopted the ordinance as drafted, that would accomplish that goal?
That you adopt, and?
I'll second that motion.
All right, second it for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
I like, two other people sitting at this table have been a part of Walton County for a long time. And I'll make this brief, but it breaks my heart to see, first of all, breed on one side, and on the other side, people that don't respect the beach anymore, and leave their trash there. So it's not just a one-faceted problem. I do not think it is reasonable. I do not think it is reasonable for you to say you can have sandwich signs or any kind of sign down here, but you've got to take them up every night. First of all, it's probably an absentee owner a lot of the times. Second, are you going to, you know, hire a kid that lives in South Walton and come take your sign up every night? I think that is the impracticality I see. I am wondering, and I think Commissioner Jones, because somebody else brought it up, can you have a sign in the middle of your property? Okay, here's, you know, that says, "Private property, ten feet to the east, ten feet to the west, and twenty feet south." And from this point, that will give a point of reference for the deputies, because they're the ones I feel sorry for, to know that twenty feet out, or five feet out or whatever, that, you know, this is, they shouldn't be there. It leaves a permanent sign and it doesn't have to be taken up. And I even kind of liked the idea of having up on the bluff a point of reference so as a deputy, I can see here and say, "Okay, that's twenty feet. Okay, that's twenty feet." The deputies are going to have to have something to work with, and I just don't think it's reasonable to ask somebody to put out their sign every morning and take their sign up every night. But if you have it on a sign in the middle of the property stating, you know, then I think maybe that will help solve the problem and you won't have so many signs littering around the water's edge of...
Commissioner, Commander, I guess, so if that were the board's wishes, I think probably the easiest way to accomplish that, if you look on page twelve, paragraph B four, if you ju... It currently reads, "Signs shall be placed at least two-hundred-and-fifty feet apart." And then it continues, "Or at the corner of the property's boundaries if the property line is less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet." If you just struck the last part of that, so if you just required signs every two-hundred-and-fifty feet, I can't think of many places on the beach that are going to be much...
How do we deal with property boundaries that are anchored? I don't mean to get in the weeds, I'm so sorry, but what do we do with the angles?
You know, at some point, everybody's going to have to be reasonable. If I have, like, what, it kind of veers off like that?
Yeah. And so, and just, my goal is to help you guys craft a motion. I mean, this obviously is your decision to make as...
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we've got a motion on the floor, and not to cut y'all off, but the motion on the floor is to accept the ordinance as written.
Yes, sir.
And then if that fails to pass, we can direct Sidney to come up with a different ordinance.
Well, that is, that's true. So we'll go ahead and take a vote on the motion, but I want, part of this motion that you talked about does not include the part dealing with the fire department.
Right, we're still going to address that.
So make sure we're on the same sheet. All right, we have a motion and a second to pass what is in twenty-two dash fifty-five, B one through seven. Is that correct?
Well, no, it's to pass the entire ordinance as drafted because there's also changes to the definitions and to section fifty-four G.
Okay, then that is as...
As drafted.
As drafted, so.
So are we going to vote on just Ms. Cecilia's motion?
Her motion was to adopt this right here.
I'm sorry, okay.
And it was seconded by Tony. So the question is, all right, called question and the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay. All right, so come up with something different.
I will help craft a motion, but obviously, this is y'all's decision to make.
I understand that.
Could I make, could we make a separate motion? I mean...
Yeah, we can.
That...
Go ahead.
That the property owner can place either in the middle of his property or each side that states, well, I'll say in the middle for discussion. East-west boundaries, twenty feet either direction, south boundaries, twenty feet, and that will define the property. It'll only have one sign that won't be in the way of the titles.
So Commissioner, Commander, as I stated earlier, and I think we've all talked about this, these regulations are content neutral. So, I mean, we've got to make sure that we have regulations that apply to all signage, including the vendor signs. So I think crafting it in that way might be a little bit problematic, but if you wanted to limit the numbers and not require them on the property corners, I think the best way to address that is to go back to paragraph B four and just delete the requirements or the provision that they be placed on the property's boundaries. And then you would just have signs every two-hundred-and-fifty feet, whether they be vendor signs, property signs, sign, political signs, any other kind of sign. It'd just be one every two-hundred-and-fifty feet.
So we're just opening up signs for everybody?
Does it... That was the whole goal all along, was that we have to be content neutral. And as you guys will remember, our very first hearing, the signs that we saw were vendor signs.
But that would, if I was a property owner, that would make me have one sign at the toe of the dunes delineating my property. I mean, that to me will help them as well as law enforcement. I mean, don't they want people to know where their property is so that people won't trespass? So to have a sign and say the...
Okay. Sheriff, are you still in the building? He's gone.
Hold me up.
You're the next man in line. Come on, Jerry.
Yes, sir. I'm Jerry Brown, I'm chief deputy. Sheriff has left the building.
I blame him.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can we go to?
Okay. Jerry, if I understand the trespass statute, for somebody to be charged with trespass has to have some type of warning to put them on notice of where they're going or where they're at, that they could be on somebody else's property.
Correct.
So with that said, pass the gavel and make a motion that, change the language in here, that there shall be a permanent sign at the toe of the dune and a permanent sign at the, on the beach side of it. And I'll tell you, you know what I'm talking about, off the water, there'd be two.
Oh, you mean like on each corner?
Each corner.
Okay.
And the reason I'm advocating that is because these guys right here are going to have to be the ones that'll go out here and make whatever charge, if any, and we need to make it definitive as to where these lines are and when the signs be lifted there accordingly.
So if it was on each corner, it would say, let's say my property's fifty feet wide, private property, fifty feet.
Yeah.
Private property, south, twenty feet. And that sign would say that so you would know, hey, twenty feet from this back sign right here, and I can't, and it's private.
Let me see if I can clarify.
To me, we'd be clear.
If you go out there, and I understand there's quite a few property owners that have gone to the expense of putting a survey in, put a survey out there. So what we're saying, I'm saying is we have one at the toe of the dune, based upon the delineation of the property, and the corresponding one out near the water. If they line up, they've been...
Tilted or...
No, well, it'd be at the toe of the dune, which I don't care if it's permanent or whatever.
Well, I got a...
Hang on a minute. Gives them, that deputy, the opportunity to stand between two particular lines and say, "Okay, Ken, he was on the wrong side of the line, you're going to have to move this way." That helps him there because GPS ain't really going to be, well, it'd be okay if you're twenty feet inside a line, but it ain't going to be much if you're right on the line.
Well, without, I'm not trying to throw another monkey wrench in this because I'm hungry right now, but the, without a specific distance from the toe of the dune or from the water's edge, how are you going to do that? I mean, if I put mine right outside the wet zone and you put yours ten feet from the toe of the dune, you know, I mean, I just feel like if we're going to do this, we need to have some type of definition of where people can put them.
Okay. Point of order, Mr. Chairman, is that I made a motion. I don't know that they got a second for discussion, so...
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Now, I'll repeat what I just said. I mean, how are we going to, are we, can we do something to say, hey, you can put it out twenty-five feet from the dune or fifty feet, whatever it is?
So, and I'm sorry, I'm just, Commissioner Chapman, are you saying that the beachfront property owners be able to stake their, the four corners, so at the toe of the dune and then at, you know, at the mean high water line?
My first motion's to stake the four corners from the toe of the dune.
But they'd be allowed to keep them up day or night?
Yes.
Okay, so to accomplish that...
You just want for a note about what you told me that.
Ms. Bowman, we're in discussion here.
Yeah, I'm chairman.
I'm sorry.
So...
You ain't making it?
Yes, thank you. No.
You've spoken out a little bit, so I'll get you back.
So to accomplish that, what we would do is on, on page ten, you would delete paragraph two, A three, and then on page twelve, you would delete paragraphs B one and B two.
Wait just a minute.
But can I throw a monkey wrench in here?
Did you say number twelve?
They just said that they could use a big tape measure. So why do you want to put the two at the bottom corners, which the turtles will run into, and maybe a safety vehicle and that sort of thing? If your sign, if my sign said, "I'm south southerly fifty feet," they got a tape measure that can go fifty feet.
Are you, excuse me, are you talking about just putting the signs at the property go, at the toe of the dunes?
Yes, sir.
Well, I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. If my sign states, my property runs twenty feet from the toe of the dune, southerly, where the, then they've got a tape measure.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're in the, but to me, the whole thing of this was to keep the signs off the beach, which impede the turtles and look bad and all that. Even if, even if you just put, I guess, which one little stake, I can see the code enforcement and all them running over.
Commissioner, Commander, so the, the original draft would have accomplished that. So that would allow you to put signs at the toe of the dune. It's just the ones on the sandy portion of the beach would have to come in at night. So that was, I believe that was Commissioner Jones's motion.
But if we're in agreement that we just want a sign at the toe of the dune with, you know, you can optionally put how far you own to the water's edge and then let the sheriff do a tape, that's a better plan than have a sandwich board.
I think so too. I mean, they said they had a big old, big old measure tape.
I know that, but we do have to allow some signage on the sandy portion of the beach under the court's rule.
You do want that?
I'm sorry, sorry.
We've got a motion.
And a second.
And a second. On my motion, so.
What was exactly your motion?
She's got to know.
You had the...
I'm saying permanent at the end. As much as I hate to put them there, I'm just looking from the law enforcement side of it to be able to...
Okay, we have, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments from the audience?
What is the motion?
The motion is to have permanent sign at the toe of the dune and a permanent sign out on the dry sand.
No, we don't agree.
Sir, come on.
Hey, we can discuss this. It's in our discussion, maybe.
Hi, Derek. I would say that I'm in strong opposition to any signage of any kind. Again, this has to be content neutral, so what you guys are going to pass here is to be any kind of sign that anybody wanted to put, whether they want to sell tacos, they want t-shirts, anything on the dry sand. Have it there during the day, all they want, that's whatever, that's fine. It should come up at night, it should not be permanent. The deputies have said they are fully capable of enforcing the law with a marker at the toe of the dune. We're talking about trespassing and they can run a tape. And again, you have to remember, a sign alone doesn't do anything. If I, if somebody goes, trespasses on someone else's property and there's a sign there, but nobody complains, then if the sign is moved, an officer has to be called, there has to be a complaint, and they have to be called.
The deputy can then make the decision as to whether or not that person is trespassing, if, if we're talking about a trespassing sign. But I think you guys can accomplish the sign ordinance easily with having, having it removed at the end of the day. I think that's perfectly reasonable.
I have a question for Sidney.
Sure.
Do they have to put out the sandwich signs, for example, or the permanent, I'm going to call them markers, if they don't want to?
No.
Can they just, can they list on their sign at the toe of the dunes, twenty feet this way, twenty feet that way? And because if you don't have anybody to take them up every day, then, you know, it can't be accomplished. So they don't have to put out the ones in the white sand unless they want?
None, none of this is mandatory. This is just regulations for those who want to have signs.
The reason I said optional sandwich board sign is because the judge, in my opinion, ruled that we had to do more than the toe of the dune, that we had to do, allow for a sign in addition to the toe of the dune. So I'm saying you have an optional choice of having the, we're not saying you can't put a sign, we're just saying that you have a choice of putting an optional sandwich board sign, but to abide by our beach activities ordinance that says all people take all things off the beach at night, then we are saying that you have to do the same thing. That's what I think.
Mr. Chairman, I'll call a question.
Okay, then we're voting on your motion, right?
We're voting on Commissioner Chapman's motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
No.
All in favor?
I'm sorry. Well, go ahead.
So you're in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Huh? Say what? I said nay.
Okay.
Three to...
Motion failed. And I will hand it back, the other back to the chairman.
Okay. Any other motions to be made concerning this?
I will try this one more time. Cecilia, help me here. I don't know what I'm saying at this point.
I'll do it.
Yeah, craft it for me. Then I'll, I'll say yes.
I make a motion that we have an optional sandwich board sign that can, that will need to be taken in at night according to our beach activities ordinance that says everything should be taken in at night. The only reason I'm saying, and we're getting the motion, is the only reason I'm saying this is to, I feel like this will meet the letter of the law to the judge, the federal court.
Okay.
Okay, so that is a sign at the toe of the dune, and on the toe of the dune sign, they can put verbiage about how, how far their property extends, and then, and then they have the right to put a sign up if they want to, a sandwich board sign that has to be taken in at night.
I will second that motion.
Motion and a second.
Just to be clear, that would be to adopt the, the draft, the drafted ordinance.
Can we do that after we've already voted?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So three to.
Can we take a break?
How quick is it going to take us to do Sammy's thing? It's very simple on his. Let's go ahead and get that, clear that one, we'll take a recess. Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Thank you for addressing this with us.
Yes, so, and just for the commissioners, what the South Walton Fire District is asking you to address is on page eleven, is paragraph H two.
Okay, this is part of the public hearing from the other one, inclusive of, like she said, page eleven, H two. It's, I think, beach lifeguard system, beach safety, wanting to...
Simply adding, South Walton Fire District is one of the agencies listed who have the authority to close the entire beach, not just the water, in case of an emergency temporarily.
Right. I think you've been doing it anyway, haven't you?
Well, we do that, we, we close the water, but we don't close the beach. But in the event there's something comes up, such as an extreme weather event, or a good example to use was during the BP oil spill, or when we have a helicopter go down, we need to close off a certain portion of the beach itself temporarily.
Okay.
We just feel like that was an oversight in the original draft.
And this would be in coordination with our other, our first responders?
Absolutely.
Yes.
My fear is that they can't do it by the, by themselves. We already have the sheriff's department. I think the BCC has the authority to do that. We add them, they want to close it, and the rest of us... We add them, they want to close it, and the rest office don't, who have the authority. Um, I think we're getting, to me, too many, too many people with their hands that we, you know, in the pie. I think the Sheriff's Department, to me, is, um, you know, they're down there, I mean, I, I know they're talking about the water, but how many people are we going to allow this, and then say the others have an objection, then what do we do?
Well, Commissioner, from my conversations, um, as I understand it, if Dave and them want to do that, they consort with the sheriff, and to make sure there has been times they wanted to, and the sheriff said no, and so they didn't. So, I think as long as it's understood between his bunch and the sheriff, that, uh, it should work. I don't know how, if this happens.
Ideal, I mean, I'm just a curiosity question. The sheriff says no, and they say yes, who, who...
You better go with what the sheriff tells you, I'm telling you.
Yeah, then I'm, then I will, yeah, we gotta, we gotta have one spring leader in anything, yeah, so that, I will go along with that.
Okay. Is any public comment concerning it? Saying no, what's the board's wishes?
Make a motion, we approve.
Oh, sorry, we don't, we don't have any draft language.
Okay.
What would you...
I make a motion that Sydney looks into this and forms a draft language and brings it back to the board.
Well, we can, so I guess, um, the South Walton Fire District's request is that they be listed as one of the entities allowed to close the beach, so, um, if you guys...
Yeah, but you need to be careful, because they, what we're saying is, they can't close it by themselves. They will have to in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department and the BCC, I think is a better way of putting that.
Okay. Okay, so I guess if we had a motion, um, that the, so it lists the board, the Director of Emergency Operations, and the Sheriff's Office have the authority to declare an emergency exist and close the beach, we could just add a new sentence and state that South Walton Fire District, uh, in coordination with those three other entities, may close the beach as well?
Does that mean, would that mean that we needed to get permission from each of those three? So if, during an exigent circumstance, and we wanted to close off a portion of the beach, we would notify you, hey, we want to close the beach. So I'd need to call the sheriff, the EOC, and the BCC?
Yes, if we drive to the...
To be clear.
I mean, I think that's the only way to do it, y'all.
Do you see any problems with that? I mean, sometimes they're time, time sensitive issues.
That's exact...
Yeah. What about two out of the room?
That is exactly our point, is that when exigent circumstances arise, we're not, we've, we've never had to do this, and we don't foresee that we will have to do this, but we would be, we would like the opportunity to be able to do this, that during an emergency situation, we believe that we are duty bound to be able to say, this is dangerous to life and property, which is what our public safety mandate is. And we believe that we have both Florida statute, through our enabling statute, and to remain consistent with our enabling statute, with the, our, our ordinance that establishes the South Walton Fire District, that if an emergency circumstance arises, we have the authority to close the beach temporarily. And of course, as we have historically and will continue to do so, we will consult with any other agencies, and we will find common ground with them. We do not seek any conflict with any other agencies over this sort of decision-making process. We just believe that, given an emergency circumstance, we already have eyes and ears out there, whether or not we're doing the beach contract. We may be the first emergency responders out there, we see something that merits the closing of it, albeit temporarily, we'll close it. You're a latter. If the sheriff decides, no, you've overstepped, we want you to reopen it, as we discussed with Mr. Chapman, and also the...
How do we have that assur, how do we have that assurance? That's why I want it stated. You can tell me, yes, this is the way it's going to be, you might be employed somewhere else five years from now. I know I won't be here. So, you've given your word, but, you know, I just feel like, I'm sorry, there needs to be, and could you, in conjunction with, even if you, uh, you know, emergency management and the sheriff are, you know, more than likely going to agree with you, but I wouldn't even think for your security, I mean, you close it, and 15 minutes later, the sheriff says, no, thou wasn't right.
Well, let's, let's think about it this way. What we giveth, we can take it away.
Yeah, but what's...
So, if that doesn't work, and it becomes a major conflict, then we can always address it to remove that.
Right.
Personally, I don't think that's going to happen, but...
I don't care.
It's, it's right.
Something could happen out, a waterspout could form out in the gulf, and this section of beach is, looks like where it's going to hit, and it's coming fast, do they, without this being allowed to do, they would have to call the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management. By that time, somebody'd be dead. I don't think they're asking for just, hey, you know, it's a sunny day, and my guy wants to be off, so we're closing the beach. I think they're ask, asking for emergency situation, and I agree with the chairman, if they overstep their bounds, then we can readdress this at a later date.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to approve.
So, so include them as an entity that has the authority to declare an emergency exist? Okay.
And, and we've, I'll wait for a second before I say anything.
Second.
All right, and, and David, I respect you guys tremendously, y'all, y'all do a great job, and you know, I've told you, and I've told the chief, I think South Walton has the best fire department in the state of Florida.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, just use this discretionally if it's passed.
Sir, we, like I said, we, we hope not to use it ever. We just feel like it was an oversight, and, and now that it has been brought up by two commissioners as a legitimate concern, we understand that. Um, we understand that there's not enough, um, conflict and drama, so we were like, you know, we really need to bring this to their attention so that we can add to that, and so that I can cause problems with the sheriffs.
I understand.
I'm just joking. I, we don't want that at all. But we would like the opportunity just to be able to handle an emergency situation in an immediate, and, Ms. Commander, i- if the sheriff were to come out and tell me, I disagree with your assessment, and we're gonna, we, we demand that you reopen it, as the law enforcement entity of the county, we're going to defer as a matter of their law enforcement.
And we want to avoid those situations.
Absolutely.
When there's times, it's timely that you can communicate, then do communicate. We're talking about those times where there's just impossible to communicate.
That's right, and we feel that it, life or property is in imminent danger, and we just want to be able to tell people, get off now.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion closed public hearing.
Thank you, commissioners.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, I apologize to the rest of the people here that still have some agenda items, but we're going to break for, uh, till about 1:15, and then we'll finish out the rest of the agenda.
Come back to order, please. Um, I guess the next thing on the agenda is a, another public hearing, reference, uh, 18 dash zero nine five nine. So entertain a motion, open public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, uh, Sid, you doing this one, or?
Uh, no, sir. I think Amy, Lorna...
They got anybody here?
I can handle it.
You can handle it?
Sure.
Okay, Larry, proceed, please, number 39.
Miss, this is a public hearing, to turn the microphone on.
Thank you.
To request all rise of the chair to sign a resolution that will bring forward the $196,750 from the preservation fund to, as a matching funds for the grant that we received for the paddle trail at, uh, Calford. And, uh, so this has been previously approved, this is just the appropriate, they used to move that, uh, these topics forward.
Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Wait, Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Um, okay, so the Choctawatchy Paddle Trail, uh, I, I found the little tourist map that shows the different landings, and, well, like you said, Crawford landings down at the bottom. Um, what exactly, this, this $193,000 is going to be for what? To put in, like, toilets and stuff along the trail?
It's some raised platform covers, and a few other things. I think there's some improvements to the ramp there also as part of that.
Okay, um, will it involve bringing any kind of, like, uh, regional water utilities?
It's already got a well on site.
It's got a, a well, does, all of them, or just the Crawford landing?
Just Crawford.
I think the rest of them are designed to be very primitive.
Yeah. This is a primitive type of campsite.
Okay, uh, yeah, 'cause I did notice that there's very, very little established out there, like, just barely one or two homes that appear to be on well systems. So I'm just curious, I mean, this is to match another $190,000, right? So we're talking $380,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Just to improve a boat ramp? That seems like an awful lot of money for...
There's a lot more than that. There's permitting, there's design, and there's a whole bunch of other things to go into that.
Um, okay, so, the water that's utilized at the Crawford landing is going to come out of the ground from the well?
That's correct.
And it's not going to be hooked up to regional utilities or Chelco power in any way?
If there's any power, it'll be brought in by Chelco. Regional's not on that side of the basin, so Regional won't be involved in it.
Regional's not on that side of the basin?
Utility.
Oh, 'cause it's, it's on the left side of the river. Um, okay, so Crawford Landing is right there next to Crawford Island?
It's the Calford.
Cal, Calford, not Crof, not Crawford, Calford, okay.
West side of the river, just south of Highway 20.
Where the cows used to go.
Oh, I think it's actually where Mary Cooper used to live. Mary E. Cooper, she's listed in the Spanish land grants on 17 West One South, Section One. See, I was looking at the deeterie around Section One because of this, and Crawford, Calford Island is divided right down the middle, and what's weird about it is that the east half, which is closer to Washington County, has actually been claimed by Walton County, where the left half, which is, the west half closer to Walton County, is, is actually claimed by Washington County. So, there's sort of like a mismatch there, where they, you know, anyways, I, I just honestly, if you go up the river and you look at these different areas where these landings are supposed to be, you find these neighborhoods, um, of undeveloped land that are, uh, lotted out almost like house lots, uh, and they're either owned by Water Management or Walton County. And I honestly think that this attempt to develop these landing sites is, is actually just a way to get over close to the river, to develop these private house lots that you're not supposed to be building around the river anyways. Um, so I think it's a scam, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, I'm gonna jump, uh, yeah.
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move the citizens' request up, since Sid's got a few other items, and, um, want to get them out of the way. First one, Kim Kirby, Grit and Grace, I don't know if she's still here or not. Maggie speaking on her behalf.
Yes, sir, I'm going to speak for Kim Kirby.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, we'd like to remind everyone that Walton County's official folklike production is presented by Grit and Grace each year during the month of July. This year, it will be, uh, July 20 and July 22nd, that's a Friday night and a Sunday afternoon. Um, and on behalf of the board, we would like to invite, uh, each of you, uh, to attend at no cost this year, uh, and the board has reserved, uh, two tickets for each of you at the will call, uh, window for this year's production, uh, and would really appreciate your attendance.
Okay.
That's Friday, July 20th.
Uh, I think Friday night, it is at 7:00 PM, and then on Sunday is at 2:00 PM. Um, and she did provide actual invitations, which, uh, if I could, I'll go ahead and pass out right now.
Thank you. All right, Kevin Boyle, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Kevin Boyle, B-O-Y-L-E, continuing to make my mom proud here.
It's twice today.
Twice, I know. Hope she's watching. Um, uh, so we are on behalf of the Seaside Arts and Entertainment Corporation, requesting to have our annual Fourth of July parade from Seagrove Plaza to West Quincy in Seaside, and so that's where the, the Tom Thumb and Garrett Realty starts there, and goes into West Quincy. Uh, we've gone through the Outdoor Review Committee with the Planning Department, and have the full and authorized support of the South Walton Fire District, Walton County Sheriff's Office, uh, and the Outdoor Review Committee, as, as well as, uh, the, uh, the owners of Seagrove Plaza.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and we do invite you guys to be a part of the parade.
Okay. All right, I think next is Alicia Butler, reference Seaside School.
Hi, I'm Alicia Butler with the Seaside School Foundation, and I want to thank you for your prior support. We just, um, earlier this year, had our 16th Annual Race Weekend, and, um, we brought visitors here from over 30 states, Canada and Germany, um, and, um, you know, did a lot to have a large impact on the econo, economy. Uh, we're, I'm, before you, I'm asking for permission to, um, close the road for the 17th Annual Race Weekend, coming up in March, um, of next year. People are already making reservations, and, you know, blowing my phone up to try to secure the dates and the travel itineraries. Um, this event funds the, you know, the Seaside School, but it's a road closure for March the, the 3rd.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Alicia, this, this is y'all's, this is y'all's big deal, and, I mean, this is how you finance the year, basically.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And how you going to address, you know, I get emails every time we have one of these afterwards, saying, you know, that I couldn't get on the highway, they blocked my subdivision, they blocked my house, I couldn't get publics. How are y'all going to address those?
Um, we send out, we put notices in the paper, um, and we put up a lot of road signage, and, um, anyone who has ever addressed me, I've made sure that, you know, we get their car moved, and we have the, you know, little, um, golf cart pick them up and get them across the road. We've tried to, you know, make every accommodation for anyone who had any, any concern, going to church, or, or whatever they were trying to, to get to.
Okay.
What day's March 3rd on, do you know?
It's a Sunday.
Sunday.
Any public comment? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we go back with our agenda, and I think Sid, you're up.
Yes, sir. Item number 40. This is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a retainer agreement with Thiriak in Spain to represent Walton County in the new lawsuit that's been filed, Blessy versus Walton County.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second, any public comment? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Commissioners, item number 41 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the settlement agreement and release in Greater Driftwood Homeowners Association versus Walton County.
I'd like for one of them to see that comment for landing.
Ditto.
Prove it quick.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Commissioners, the next item, item number 42, is a request to schedule and advertise the public hearing to consider the adoption of the new customary use ordinance pursuant to the procedure required by House Bill 631. You'll see in your agenda packages that what we're, what I'm asking is that we set the hearing sometime in August, and after talking with Dave Thiriak, the best days would be August 21st, August 23rd, or August 24th. So I'm asking that you guys... And if it's all right, I would like to leave the location, as of right now, open. We're trying to work with the school district, unfortunately, the schools go back to school on August 10th, which is crazy to me, but, um, so we may not be able to have it at a school, but we're still exploring other options. One might be the Boys and Girls Club, but we would have to be out of there by 2:00 PM because school's back in session. So if we can just set the date, and I would suggest that we start at 9:00 AM, and then we'll figure out the location. If we have to, we'll make this location work, but we're obviously looking for a larger venue if possible.
And August is, the end of August is to use the Boys and Girls Club?
Well, if we could leave the location still open, what I really need from you guys is the date.
Well, the 23rd is land use hearing, right?
Is it? Okay.
Yes, our land use hearing.
Okay.
Any consideration for later, like the first week in September?
I'd rather do it on the 21st.
Will we all be here?
Will you be here?
I will not be here.
I think it needs to be all of us. I think it needs to be everybody.
I'm in agreement with that, because there's two board members here that weren't here during the original discussion where we passed what we passed. So it's important, in my opinion, to try and have the same where everybody, especially the new ones, I'm sure what we're gonna hear this time around is what we heard first time around, and it's probably nothing, nothing new to us, but y'all need to have the full background of this before a decision is made. So you, you want to be back till September 5th?
September 5th, if I can do it.
How about the 12th of September?
Commissioner Commander, I guess if I could, so Mr. Thiriak gave me dates up to September 7th, so he said he's available September 6th and September 7th.
Six or seven of what?
Sixth or seventh, but I don't have his schedule after those dates.
Six would work?
For me.
Six would work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make that motion if it helps in here.
September 6th, okay, that's a motion and a second. Any public comment concerning just setting the hearing dates, all it is. September 6th, 9:00 AM, but we don't know exactly where its space availability. All right, got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Item number 43 is a request to approve and to hold an executive session in Blessy versus Walton County. I have on here July 10th, if possible, that's before our next board meeting, but if you guys are available before that date, we can make that work as well.
Before July the 10th?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay. So July the 10th, 3:00 PM?
We got a budget workshop that day.
Oh, we do?
One minute.
In the morning, yeah.
Yeah, 10:00.
Oh, okay. We could, we could either do it... If the budget workshop's at 10, we could do this at 9:00 that morning, if you'd like.
But don't we have a BCC meeting down here the 10th at 4?
Yes, we could do it that way.
Do you want us to get up at 9:00 and 10:00, and then 4:00, are you trying to kill me?
I'm sorry. It was completely up to you guys when you liked that.
Half a day is gone by 9:00.
Yeah, but you stay up until midnight, you need to sleep a little bit.
Do you think an hour would be enough?
Yes, sir. We could have it at 3:00 PM.
So what were our choices, the 10th or what else?
Uh, if you'd like to do it on the 10th, we could either do it at 9:00, which I know is not the preference, or at 3:00 PM before our BCC meeting.
Is that in, down here?
Yeah.
Or we can consider another date. For the executive sessions, I'm just required to give reasonable notice.
3:00 is fine, 3:00. I'll go with 3:00.
On the 10th?
Yes, sir.
Is that a form of a motion?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion, July the 10th at 3:00, at South Walton Annex. I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, any public comment? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Commissioners, the last item I have was the add-on to the agenda, and it's a request to approve an engagement letter with the Warner Law Firm to represent us on two cases that were consolidated, Flock of Sea Girls and Valentine Heights. And I can give you a little bit more information if you'd like, but these were customary use lawsuits that were filed against the county. There were two counts, one, the first one had to do with customary use, and the second one had to do with an easement that we have across these properties. So the first count was dismissed by the court as moved in light of House Bill 631. So the only thing that's left is the remaining count that has to do with the easements. The Warners have already been working on this, but because it's just a declaratory judgment action, and there's no attorney's fees or damages associated with it, we don't have insurance coverage any longer. But I would like the Warners to finish this case.
Second.
A motion and a second, any public comment? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
That's all I have.
That all you got? Okay, Commissioner Commander.
Yes, we just discussed the Seaside Parade, and want to remind everybody, in the city of Puniac Springs, around Circle Drive, we will have the Fourth Annual 27th, I don't think the parade's gonna go on, anyway, we will have the Fourth of July Parade in Puniac Springs and the Lakeyard, and then we will move all the festivities out to We Care Park, and the parade's at 4, and then come out to We Care after that. Shane Owens is entertaining the group, and we will have lots of fireworks after dark.
Okay.
What time is the parade?
4.
An opening out there 6, what time?
Yeah, opening is roughly at 6:00, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lefter.
No, Chairman.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes. The property at San Roy, that's at the mouth, well, not quite the mouth of Eastern Lake, is going to, they're going to build a big house there, and I think, I would love to see the board try one more time to see if we could negotiate a deal with him. We might not be able to, but just to, you know, just to forever know that we did everything we could. The Corps of Engineers owns a parcel next to it. There's been issues before where sand was dropped into the lake from that lot where he's building this house, and it would, it, it just would mean a lot if we could at least try to see if we could get another appraisal and see if he would even be willing to be reasonable in this, if the board so chooses, and I'm asking you to please choose.
All right, I'll go ahead and entertain the motions, that's one.
Yeah, make a motion, second for discussion.
Second.
Mac, I've, I've been very interested in this because we own the southern portion, and I watched the, on the zoning board of adjustment meeting, there was some question, and I didn't understand it regarding something to do with the letter, and it was that, I don't know if this has anything to do with it, there was a variance given on the northern side, not the eastern side, and the...
Yes, ma'am.
The intent is, I guess the mega house is a 12,000 square foot home is what the intent is, and then, can you, can you kind of go through that with...
Just a quick review. The Board of Adjustments met, I believe, on May 24th, and approved a reduction in the front setback from 20 feet, the standard county front setback, to zero, adjacent to the government patent easement for San Roy Road, the 33 feet that traverses the northern 33 foot of the subject lot. In other words, they were not allowed to build into that easement, but they were allowed to build right up to it. And that, that easement takes the northern 33 feet of the lot. The house immediately to the right, along with the previous consistency letters issued for Mr. Russell's lot there on San Roy. They first considered that front setback to be measured from the northern property line within the 33-foot easement. We had two consistency letters written based on that as meeting the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code. Those had expired, they came back to ask the county for another consistency letter, consistent with the two that the previous directors had issued. I refused to do that because they were not consistent with the Right-of-Way Protections Zone language in the Land Development Code that requires that front setback to be measured from the greater extent of the government patent easement as opposed to the lot line. So I would not write the same letter, because it was inconsistent with the Land Development Code. They were afforded due process to go to the Board of Adjustments and ask for a reduction in front setback. That is the only thing that was before the Board of Adjustment, just to request to reduce the front setback. The Board of Adjustment did not address the impacts of the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. They did not address the size of the proposed house, although that was the footprint that was provided as part of the submittal requesting the petition for variance.
And in the past, Florida DEP has approved a home there in the northeast corner. Did they approve for the 12,000 square foot footprint?
I don't think they have now. They've got to go back and get a, a, either a new permit or revised permit to be able to build what they're proposing to build.
And we, and I remember, this was when I was campaigning, there's not enough room for a regional access, but only neighborhood, and I can't remember who owns north towards the lake, but that basically would be golf carts, the most you could have would be golf carts and bicycles there?
Well, and I don't know that that has been fully determined yet. What I've tasked our staff with is going back and taking a look at this, this actual lot, the consistency letter that we expect the applicant's gonna request from the county, which we will not issue until the 30-day appeal period on the variance has expired or a judge gives us an order saying that an appeal of the variance has been dispensed with. But in the meantime, we're gonna take a new look at just what the impacts of the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone are. We're going to ask the applicant to provide us with a historical sweep analysis about the outfall, so we can determine where to measure that 50-foot protection for the outfall. I can't tell whether or not this lot is gonna be buildable yet, and I can't tell you whether or not a regional access or a neighborhood access would be appropriate. But what I will tell you is, we're gonna reanalyze this, and it won't matter who owns it or who buys it, our assessment will still be the same. It'll either be, there'll either be a buildable area there for something, subject to the restrictions provided by the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone regulations, or there won't.
So what's the timeframe, you think, that you can come up with these answers so that we can, like, I guess, consider going out for appraisals?
Well, subject to the applicant actually requesting the Coastal Construction Control Consistency Letter for their permit with DEP, we can make some estimate based on the historical submittals that we have. I think we may have an, a, a survey that was provided in the past for the last consistency letter. We'll take a look at that, subject to them providing us a new survey that has more detail about that, the sweep of the outfall. But we're gonna, we're gonna make our best guess until we have better data. I wouldn't expect that, well, 30 days from the date of that filing, and I think that was Friday a week ago, I would expect within the next two weeks.
I'm wondering if, if it's buildable or not buildable would make a difference in the appraisal price? I don't know.
I'm not a real estate appraiser, and I'd certainly defer to those licensees, but it very well could affect the price.
Okay.
My question, Mac, if they gave them a variance to come right up to the right-of-way line or the patent line, whatever it is?
Yes, sir.
Where are they gonna park?
Well, they indicated that all the parking was gonna be contained within garages within the building. Because we did make that point, that parking in the easement is not something that they're allowed to do.
But I think we've been told in the past that we couldn't put a regional access point in there, but now go with a 12,000 plus and let them build out, or as of right now? That just don't make sense to me.
I...
Commissioner Chapman.
Think a lot of us have some heartburn with a 12,000 square foot house being proposed in this particular location. It was certainly their due process to be able to ask the Board of Adjustments for that variance. I just don't think the lot of record policy that says you can build a single-family home without regard to other impacts ever intended, anyone would be asking to build a 12,000 square foot house based on that policy.
Commissioner Chapman, I was gonna say, so if the board does authorize staff to get those appraisals, at the same time while we're waiting on those appraisals, we can easily do an assessment, much like the environmental assessments that you've had us do on other properties, so we can have all that information for you and bring it back to you.
Right, but the buildability changes the price of the appraisal, so I think we've got the chicken and, something about a cart and a horse.
So all of our, the Coastal Dune Lake provisions, the Coastal Protection Zone provisions, all of those, those provisions in our comprehensive plan have an out clause that they still allow you to build a single-family residence on a lot of record, which this is. So, I mean, that's something...
Right, but in lieu of not getting permits?
I'm sorry?
But if you can't get a DEP permit, then you can't build, even though it's a buildable government lot, correct?
I'm just saying, our permits in the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code would not keep them from building a single-family home on this property.
Yes, the reason they have to get a DEP permit for construction is because this entire lot lies south of the Coastal Construction Control Line.
Right.
And any, any construction south of that line requires a DEP permit.
I obviously can't speak for the state and federal government, but I would be shocked if they did not permit some sort of residence on this.
And they have issued permits in the past, I would expect that they probably would in this case. However, even if you do authorize the appraisals, the appraisals are gonna come talk to the Planning Department and ask this very question that, that we're gonna ask ourselves anyway in advance of that, so I don't, I don't see that uncertainty really holding anything up. It's a determination that we're gonna have to make. It'll just be a question of how refined that determination is based on the survey data that we have available right now.
With DEP and the other agencies, I mean, 12,000-foot houses, they might be, would they have any, okay, you can build a house, but it can't be bigger than 2 by 4, I mean, you know, can they put, can, or will they put regulations on how big that house can be?
They will absolutely define a maximum footprint and the location of that footprint. Now, how they get to what that maximum footprint is, I hesitate to speak on their behalf.
You might just have to change the phrase, too.
But, and again, the 12,000 square foot house is a multi-story house, it's not a 12,000 square foot footprint as proposed, but the DEP will make that final determination as to the size of the footprint and where the footprint can, can land, and I think US Fish and Wildlife, given that this is a bird nesting area and a turtle nesting area, would have some input also.
Beach mouse, too.
Beach mouse.
And Sydney?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, you know, what do you think we should do first?
I, I...
Do we give the appraisals, do we...
I think, so, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I think that there would be nothing wrong with us going forward with the appraisals, because as Mac said, the appraisal, and this has happened on numerous properties where we've had to get appraisals in the past, the first thing they do if there's environmental concerns is they call Mac and talk to them. So I, I don't think there's a problem with us going forward with those appraisals.
Has that motion been made, or...
I second for discussion, so...
Okay. All right, public comment, Mr. Fletcher.
Bill Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. I guess I don't have a real problem with an appraisal, but I know in that zoning board hearing, Mac made the statement that he didn't feel like, he felt like the permit was issued in error initially, and I think all the reasons he had still exist, and are actually compounded now because you're talking about a smaller lot. I think if you, there's no question in my mind, I'm not a Realtor either, but I got, I'm married to a pretty good one, but if, if that lot is not buildable, the value of it is dramatically less than if it is. So I would suggest if you're gonna get an appraisal, have them take both scenarios into consideration at that time. Thank you.
We might be in a position where we get a really good deal.
Yeah.
Okay, any other public comment?
I have.
Okay, any other comments from the board? All right, Ms. Bowman, come on.
I called a question.
Huh?
I called a question.
You called a question?
I did.
All right, called a question, Ms. Bowman, we'll move into the vote. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Can I have one more thing? I'm not asking for an appraisal, but on the Natural Bridge property, I was wondering if we could get staff just to talk to Benton and Hester again and see if there's any property...
if we could get staff just to talk to Benton Hester again and see if there's any property, it's in my district, and my district, really, the people need a place, a recreational place, so it might be that it's way too much, but just no appraisal or anything, but just, thank you, thanks.
All right. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss my chance to talk about that?
Yes, the question was called for, so we took a vote on it, and it passed, so there wouldn't be any more comments after the question's been called.
Oh, but she said that after I was already up here.
Didn't make any difference. She called a question halfway through your presentation if she wanted to.
Oh, okay, well...
Let's see, what else? Make sure. We got, at this point in time, got public comment, you can talk about anything that you wanna talk about. Now that you can speak, Ms. Bowman.
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N, I need that 15 seconds back. Okay, so, this is the First National Bank of Crestview, sponsored by WA Laird and Co., also sponsored by J.J. McCaskill and Company. This is Walton County, north of the bay only, because that is the only place you exist, and this is when a bank in Crestview started selling Indian land illegally. They created a whole new county called Okaloosa, so they would have an excuse to file new deeds, and that's part of how they acquiesced the Choctawatchee Peninsula. So, this is the reason why I started mapping the Spanish land grants, is because if you zoom in on these, you find little squares like this with names on them, and there's a whole lot of names that actually do match names on the Spanish land grants. What's wrong about it is that so many of them don't match or are found in weird, different locations on this map, and this is one of the, this was from like 1908 when they first proposed building the bridge across the bay, and that would give people a way to come down here and steal the Indian land. So, since we were talking about Cowford Island, I did happen to mention that that's where Mary E. Cooper lived, Section 1, up here on the island that's divided half between you and half between them, and Walton County has the wrong side. That's probably because that side of the island's better to build on. But so, anyways, this is Mary E. Cooper, and I heard a story when I was a kid about how she sold her land to four different men, and when the four of them came asking, she told the first man that she sold him the house that was on the land, she told the second guy that she had sold him the trees, she told the third guy that she had sold him the dirt, and the fourth guy that she had sold him the water, and when the taxman came around, she just lifted her skirt and gave him the last thing she had to pay. So, if you zoom in on Mary Cooper's square, Section 1 of 17 West, 1 South, on the McCa, on the, damn it, First National Bank of Crestview map, what you'll find is four names, J.J. McCaskill and Company, J.J. McCaskill and Company, and the W-L-L-T, the Walton Land and Timber Company, because you all leased that area out there to cut the trees down off of, which is why you wanna put the paddle trail in. So, I guess that's my three minutes of today to prove you're corrupt as shit.
Yes, ma'am, of course. All right, let's see, anyone else? Any other public comments? Saying none, we'll move into Mac. I think you got three additional items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item is a request to approve the following planning commission reappointments. Michael Parker for District 4, Michael Harbin at large seat, and Lee Perry at large seat.
Motion is for a second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Saying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next two items relate to policies related to fee calculations. The first one is a request to approve the preservation fee calculation policy. This details how we actually calculate preservation buyout when an applicant chooses to buy out some required vegetative community preservation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Ms. Bowman?
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N, yeah, in one of these meetings, I happened to mention about people destroying preservation land, and Mac said that it's the state of Florida that gets paid for these conservation easements, which I would like to say is probably why I have photographs of state of Florida fire trucks delivering bulldozers to conservation easements. This is because the state of Florida, somebody takes a tax write-off for calling their land preservation, meaning they'll never build on it, and therefore it's worth less money. And then what happens is between you and the state of Florida and your backdoor finagling, they have developed all of this land that's supposed to never be built on, and then they say, well, somebody paid the punishment for it, when really it's the same thing as your system of fines, where instead of preventing people from doing what they're not supposed to do, they do it anyways, and then you charge them money for it. So, basically, you and the state of Florida are both making bank off of other people's tax write-offs. So, this little meeting to decide how you're going to make fees is really a meeting to decide how you're gonna make money doing what you're not supposed to do. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Saying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. Similar policy, we're requesting you to approve for the calculation of recreation fees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Saying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, that's all of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
So, move. Re-adjourn.